I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please don't pay attention to that clock. Apparently, our county staff is behind the times.[8.69][8.69](Laughter). We will begin our meeting with a flag salute led by interim County Counsel, Ms. Karen Schwab.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now, we'll move to the ceremonial administration of the Oath of Office of Incoming Supervisors and Electoral Officials. Presiding Judge Alan Paneshi doing the honors. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Doing the honors, Your Honor. So...
Yes, this is where you guys get up?
Come on, this is the part where you go down there.
It's Robert's first time, so he didn't know what to do. I get more...
Are you seeing everybody here?
Yeah, all the...
Well, wait a minute here.
Any of the county wives that want to wish to participate, right?
Yeah.
All at the same time?
All at the same time.
All at the same time.
How did we all see that?
Aye.
Who else? Look at this. Andy, get in there.
Good morning. Are you ready?
Wow, aren't you ready?
Please raise your right hand. I, Deidre Day.
I, Bonnie Gore.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, all of you. (Applause). Photo.
Ritual photo.
Oh, ritual, yes.
Guess she gets to be in the middle. Can we get rid of that?
Photo, Mom.
Yes.
Nice grin, Jim.
I can't get that off.
(Laughter).
Now is the time to select the officers for the 2019 Chair and 2019 Vice Chair. I look to the Dean of the Board, Supervisor White. Did you want to give us a little background on how this procedure works?
Well, I certainly can. So, thanks. So, Karen, can you correct me on this? But I am being careful. But the Board, ultimately, the authority of the Board is what determines our Chair and Vice Chair. We elect those every year, but we have a strong culture in Placer County of simply rotating our Chairs. So typically, the Chair is District 1, District 2, District 3, 4, et cetera. But when a freshman...
I'm etcetera.
Yeah, I'm not here to be etcetera, yeah.
The rest of us are on the list. You got two.
You know, there are several things I thought of right now, but I think I'm going to say nothing because I'm older and I'm smart enough to realize that it's one of those moments. So, anyway, I think that serves us well, Districts 4 and 5, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, et cetera, because it less politicizes the position of Chair and Vice Chair, which I think is healthy, except when typically, a freshman comes in who would rotate into Chair, we have skipped over that person, and then the Vice Chair becomes the Chair, and the freshman at the time becomes the Vice Chair. So Bonnie would be Chair next year, and then we go back into rotation. So, that's historically what we've done. I've seen it a couple of times in Placer County, once since I've been on the Board, when Supervisor Gaines came to the Board. So that would be my recommendation, and that's the history that I'm aware of.
Okay. And in 2008, I believe, I offered the Chair to Supervisor White... What's your name again? District 5.
Etcetera.
The District 5 Supervisor.
Etcetera.[276.64][276.64](Laughter).
Since this was last year of her first term as a gracious offerer, I offered the Board Chair to her and took the Vice Chair. Anyhow, so that's been the history. So, is... Are you prepared to make a motion about...
Sure. I would move then, if I've got the sequence right, that Supervisor Euler become Chair and Supervisor Gore become Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any other nominations? Hearing none? There is a motion in second to appoint Supervisor Euler as Chair and Supervisor Gore as Vice Chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, congratulations. Now we'll do the dance.[316.02][316.02](Applause).
As tempting as it would be to have my first official order be to call a recess, before we do that, a couple of things. Number one, I would like to acknowledge the service of Supervisor Holmes in this last year. Our Board has taken up a number of issues in this last year that had a little bit of controversy, some of them from the national level on down, and we had a number of hours of public hearings on some of these issues that had to be managed with great aplomb. And of course, we can always count on the face of the foothills to take care of that for us. So I want to thank Supervisor Holmes for his service.[375.31][375.31](Applause).
Hey, I've got one just like this.[379.12][379.12](Laughter).
And then, we will have official Board Member reports in just a moment, but before we do take a brief recess, to allow folks to be on the way with their day, I would like to ask if any of my colleagues have any comments in general they might like to make as we start this meeting. And I will start with Supervisor Holmes.
The past Chair.
Yes, former Chair, face of the foothills, Supervisor Jim Holmes.
You're finally getting it, Kurt. Thanks. No, I just wanted to say, this is a momentous time for Placer County, because now, for the first time ever, we have two nice women.[422.12][422.12](Laughter) They were not nice before, but on the Board of Supervisors. So, it's going to be an interesting year, and I'm looking forward to a kinder and jebler Board of Supervisors.[433.22][433.22](Laughter).
Supervisor Gore, is there something that you might like to say at this time?
Yes, thank you. I'll turn on the microphone to learn how this works. Well, first of all, I would just like to say thank you to all of you who are here to show your support this morning. It means the world to me that many of you showed up this morning, drove up the hill just to be here for the swearing-in. And I am really excited about this opportunity to serve the residents of Placer County in District 1. I appreciate the vote of support the residents of District 1 have shown in me, and I appreciate the support that you all have given to me. I want to say thank you to my husband, who has been my biggest supporter, as well as all of you who have supported me, not only in this election for the Board of Supervisors, but also as I served as a member of the Roseville City Council. And I'm committed to continuing to make sure that we maintain the fiscal sustainability of our county, and making sure that this continues to be a wonderful place to work and do business and to raise our families. Placer County is a tremendous place to live and work, and we know that. That's why we're here. That's why you all work here and live here. And there are always challenges, but I look forward to working with my colleagues on the Board, with the elected officials from the other cities, to really address some of the bigger challenges that we have, so we continue to move forward and make this a great place that we're all proud to live and work. So with that, I'm excited to work with you all. Thank you so much for the support, and we'll look forward to maybe a kinder Board, Supervisor Holmes, but a tenacious Board as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.[539.25][539.25](Applause). And Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, well, I wanted to say congratulations to everyone who got sworn in this morning. But, Robert, you're sort of old hat, so I'm going to address my comments to Bonnie.[554.12][554.12](Laughter).
Your etcetera, your old hat. Face of the foothills, we got a lot going on.
But I'm delighted that we have a second woman on the Board of Supervisors. I mean, it's kind of amazing to think that it's taken until 2019 for two women to serve at the same time on the Board of Supervisors. We've had a number of really incredibly competent, smart, wonderful, committed women who have served on this Board, but never two at the same time. And you may not have noticed, but coincidentally, we dressed alike. We both wore purple jackets and black outfits, so we'll be calling each other every Tuesday morning for meetings, and not going to repeat this dressing like twins thing. But I'm just delighted to have Bonnie on board with us. I've had the opportunity to work with her through a number of other events over the years, a lot of them really focusing on women's voting rights and making sure that women's voices are heard in the public dialogue. And again, I'm just delighted that I've got another woman on this Board, and now we have three women sitting at the dais. This is just a really incredible moment for Placer County, and I think it's worth reflecting on and worth noting. And I think Bonnie and Karen are really going to help lead this year, and I'm very much looking forward to it, and we will persist. So while we are nice ladies, we will also be extremely persistent. So, thank you and welcome.[643.04][643.04](Applause).
And then, I just wanted to acknowledge, as we swore in, some of the countywide elected officials who were kind enough to stand up with our incoming supervisors this morning. Unfortunately, our clerk recorder, Chief of Elections, Mr. Ronco, who was elected this last year, had a little surgery yesterday, and so medically was unable to join us this morning. He's doing well. He sends us well wishes, but unfortunately was unable to be here. But he's with us in spirit and would have been performing that oath of office if it weren't for the fact that Judge Paneshi just looked so good in that robe.[691.00][691.00](Laughter). At this time, we're going to take a brief recess to allow folks to get on with their Okay, we're going to go ahead and get our Board meeting underway here. Those folks who wish to escape should already have done so by now. You can hear Ed Horton, can't you?
Yeah.
Ed's got one of those distinctive voices. All right. We're going to move on with our consent agenda. Are there any items on consent that any Board members wish to have removed for discussion? I see none. Any member of the public wish to have an item that is currently on consent poll? Seeing none, do we have a motion on consent?
Second.
All right, motion Holmes, second Montgomery. Roll call, please.
Gore?
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. Okay, this is the time for public comment. Any member of the public can address the Board of Supervisors on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that the Board is not allowed to take action on items that are raised in public comment. We ask that you address your comments to the Board of Supervisors and try to keep your comments to three minutes, and these kind ladies will have a visual and audible reminder for you when your three minutes are up. So, please introduce yourself and fire away.
Good morning. I am Rochelle Woodward, and you have a little information pack that I provided for you.
Mm-hmm.
I am a native of Placer County, and I want to discuss the 2018-2019 drought. Yes, it's a real thing. If you'll look at the package, and look at my graphic, we are literally dead even with the 1977 and the 1978 drought. We are so far behind. So even though we've had recent rains, we are two months behind the normal rainy season. The Northern California reservoirs have not kept pace with the calendar. In fact, the volume in Folsom Lake is only slightly ahead of the lowest level during the extreme drought of 1978. Last week, the Sierra snowpack measurement was taken, and we are well below average there, too. This means we need to sound the alarm and start serious water conservation measure now. We need to capture and save every drop before the weather changes. With a historical drought looming, we need to also focus on wildfire prevention and remediation. We have to set political differences aside and focus on solutions. One minor solution to lessen the fire danger is for Placer County and Rockland to ban the sale and use of personal fireworks. Inform charities now that there will be no permits issued for fireworks sales, and they need to explore other funding options. I know this will be difficult, but it will be truly a safe and sane option in our extreme fire environment. I served in the military to protect our personal freedoms, but the safety of our community shall take precedence. No charity fundraiser should be allowed to put entire communities at risk for death and destruction. Our area has been compared to Santa Rosa in that it has the same wildfire risk profile. It's only a matter of time before we are directly affected by a severe fire event, not just the nuisance smoke we suffer through for a few days. We have been very lucky because we have large areas that are prone to fire. The wooded Sierras have been under heat stress for years. We have dry vegetation from Tahoe to Roseville. In my own area, I worry about the Rockland Golf Club, Clover Valley, and the heritage oaks that surround us in Whitney Oaks. All it will take is a spark or two, and our way of life will change forever. That's why I'm asking this august body to seriously consider banning the sale and use of fireworks in the county. We have a new environment, and we must make hard choices and difficult decisions to protect our homes, our communities, and our residents. It won't be easy, but we have to start somewhere, and this is a good way to start. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just briefly, fireworks are illegal in the unincorporated Placer County already, so we've already taken that step, and jurisdictionally, each of the city councils has authority. So I'd encourage you to direct those same remarks to...
I'm planning to go tonight to Placer.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Good morning. Please step forward. Introduce yourself, please.
Good morning, Board, and Happy New Year, and welcome, Bonnie Gore. My name is Mike Lutzker. I live on Bell Road. I'm on the Steering Committee for Preserve Rural Placer County, and I want to let you know, we're going to fight just as aggressively this year as we did last year, to stop the parking lot on Bell Road and any access to Hidden Falls from Garden Bar. As we've gone over this many times with the Board, it's safety issues, traffic, fire, so forth. So we will be at the MAC meetings, at Board meetings, and planning commission meetings this year to fight our cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Diane Dolly. I live at 9300 Kramer Road. First, I want to publicly state that I agree with all the public comments against the purchase of the Bell Road property and the proposed Hidden Falls expansion. But I'm not going to talk about that or repeat that. I instead wish to address the issue of transparency and accountability. Last fall, I asked Lisa Carnahan from the Lead Agency for this acquisition for a copy of the appraisal for the purchase of the Bell Road property. Both she and Andy Fisher refused the request with no explanation. As a retired real estate loan underwriter, I'm familiar with reviewing appraisals for supporting the purchase of property, particularly rural properties. The Lead Agency has, according to the summary of the purchase agreement, offered a price of $1,120,000 cash and a leaseback over 10 years for an additional value of $192,000, for a total sales price of $1,312,000 to the seller. My research found that the purchase price appears to be very much out of line and overinflated. 100 acres on Big Hill Road is listed right now for $750,000. That's $7,500 an acre. 160 acres on Bell Road, or on Big Hill Road, is listed for $1 million. That's $6,250 per acre. And then, the most recent one I found is 25 acres on Kramer Road, listed for $450,000. That's $18,000 an acre. Subject property in escrow for $26,560 an acre. And as you can see, the smaller parcels go for more per acre than the larger parcels. Even if I took the highest per acre price on that 25-acre parcel of $18,000, it only comes up to $900,000. That's a difference of $412,000, and I believe the actual value on that Bell Road property is probably a little less. The Lead Agency did get a broker's opinion of value from a county real estate consultant, which would imply a small attempt to satisfy the public, and it's just an opinion. I ask that before you make a decision on this proposal, that you require a full, valid appraisal by an independent appraiser to support the sales price and its fair market value, and that this appraisal be part of the information provided to the public. This would provide transparency and accountability of all involved in this proposed project. As our former President Ronald Reagan said, "Trust, but verify." Clearly, in this situation where the value is not supported, the county should obtain a valid appraisal. If in fact the property is overpriced, I say the county should not close escrow, and the sale should be canceled. There must be accountability for how the county spends the public's money. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bart Rude, Kramer Road. I want to wish each of you well as you enter a new year of responsibility and accountability in Placer County, and a particular warm welcome to Ms. Gore, representing District 1. Thank you, Mr. Holmes, for your representation in District 3. I come before you this morning to remind you of the Protect Rural Placers resistance opposition, if you will, to the purchase of the 50 acres known as the Twilight Ride property at 5345 Bell Road. And I remind you that we are vehemently opposed to the parking lot that's proposed for that particular site. I remind you that we are opposed to the expansion of the trail system emanating in the Hidden Falls Regional Park, because that trail system, with its expansion to the north and to the west, and to the northwest of Hidden Falls, would be very disruptive to agriculture. And I remind you also that the cattle industry was the number-one agricultural industry in Placer County for the last year. We have records, 2017, and those are county figures. So, the trail system expansion is noted as an $18 million program. That kind of expenditure seems to me to be irresponsible, and it's a project that we understand will really never pay for itself. And so, in a sense, it might be called irresponsible spending. It seems alarming to me that we could spend that kind of money, but yet we cannot support a fire district in the Forest Hill area. And a fire station in that area might cost, in the area, something around $2.5 million a year. So, where is the sense of responsibility? So there are plenty of other places for trail systems where users can ride horses, ride mountain bikes, and hike with their dogs on leash or off. And I would remind you that we have the Auburn State Recreation Area. We have Folsom Lake Recreation State Park area, if you will. We have two adjacent national forests, the Tahoe Forest and the El Dorado National Forest. And so disrupting a neighborhood, a longstanding neighborhood where agricultural is a prime interest, is just, seems to me ludicrous that we go in that direction. So, we have hundreds of constituents in Districts 3 and 5 and 2 that are adamantly opposed to the expansion of the trail system because of its disruption of the neighborhood and of agriculture. So we appreciate your interest in looking at this matter and making a decision based on wisdom and fact. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Supervisors under public comment? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to Board Member and County Executive Reports. Any Board Members have anything to Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I wanted to give a brief report about our Fire Services Ad-Hoc Committee that we... and Supervisor Montgomery, you can pop in here anytime you want. We started in May 22nd of last year, and we've had 11 meetings. Since the formation of this Ad-Hoc Committee, there's been a lot of change. We've had a lot of fires, particularly the Paradise Fire. So, the scope of our Ad-Hoc Committee has kind of broadened. We need to get out and address what this lady said before about fire-safe alliances, fire-safe councils, fire-safe communities. That's something that we've got to have to take a look at. We'll hopefully, this early this afternoon, we will be up in Culpecks with the new Governor talking about these issues. What we've done also is we've contacted a consulting group to take a look and work with all the fire chiefs to make sure that our response times are in sync and that we're not duplicating any efforts, any efforts that don't need to be done. So we need to find ways to make sure that fire service is conducted without duplication of efforts, and so that's where we are. We are going to begin community conversations early spring. We hope to have the consulting group report done by early spring, and so we will be beginning to reach out to the communities, particularly North Auburn and Ophir, which is vulnerable, to provide more information to the residents about fire safety, defensible space, and the need for sustainability in our fire service. So, that concludes my comments. Supervisor Montgomery, if you had any need to...
Yeah, just to tag on to Supervisor Holmes' comments, one of the things that has become very clear, I think, to everyone in California is this is not an issue of forests, which is how it has been perceived. is how it has been perceived in the past. This is an issue of the intersection between more urbanized development and our wildlands, generally. The fires, the campfire, many of the fires that we've seen recently within the last few years have been fires either in grasslands, in shrub areas, chaparral, in oak forest rather than pine or coniferous forests. And so, I think one of the things that Supervisor Holmes and I have really agreed we need to focus on is county-wide educational efforts around the real dangers to all of us. Roseville, frankly, surrounded by grasslands, is probably at, you know, significant, different, but significant risk as Forest Hill. And so, some of these efforts that we're going to be engaging in over the coming months, we're going to be partnering with the Fire Safe Councils and others in the county. There's a documentary that we're going to be rolling out in conjunction with the Fire Safe Councils here on the west side, where we have Fire Safe Councils. On the east side, we're going to be rolling it out in conjunction with the Municipal Advisory Councils. Fantastic documentary called Wilder Than Wild. I would encourage everyone to keep your eye open for the showings of that. But we really need to start having the very serious conversations about personal responsibility, and what are our responsibilities as private property owners? This challenge that we're facing with the wildlands is not something that the county or a city or the state or the federal government alone can solve. We are all going to have to be pulling in the same direction to create a more fire-safe county for ourselves. And I say more fire-safe because there is nothing that will stop the wrong fire in the right conditions. And so, thank you for the report, thank you for the update, but please keep your eyes and ears open. We will be rolling out the documentary, we will be planning some town halls, we're going to be doing a town hall up in the, it might be Eastern Placer County or it might be Eastern Nevada County. We're going to be partnering with the Town of Truckee and Nevada County to do some sort of presentation, town hall presentation up there, where we hear from Office of Emergency Services, we hear from our local fire districts up there, we hear from the county, we hear from the Sheriff's Department, Truckee PD, to understand what is in place, what are the plans, and how do we plan to implement them in the case of some sort of emergency. And I think I will leave it at that, but thank you Supervisor Holmes, appreciate the report.
All right, thank you. Any other Supervisors have anything they'd like to add at this point?
Additional, or if you will. I was contacted by a retired supervisor and the retired county executive officer about this flag, of how it came into being. I know it's better than me, but I, it's, I think it's time to take a look at that flag. We've got a new county logo, and bring something more appropriate for the 21st century. So, I have a few ideas. I worked with my amazing district director, but I need to know if the Board is willing or even interested in doing something about a new county flag. So, I throw that out to you.
Supervisor Wagant, you and I were here when we adopted that county flag, so if you want to give a little of the-
Yeah, my recollection of all the details is that one of the P D Res, Loomis, Bob Geek-
Rockland, I think.
Rockland, you're right, you're right, yep. But he was very interested in establishing one, and we gave him opportunity to do some research and come back with something, and I think it served us well for the time, but I'm certainly willing to consider an upgrade to it, and please took an interest in it.
All right, good. So-
I have no objection.
Oh.
No, I'm just out.
Yeah, any other thoughts? All right.
Yeah, so we have some prototypes that we'll be bringing forward in the future.
Perfect.
And while I'm at it, the county seal there is hand carved. I don't know if anybody ever knew that, that that is a hand carved county seal by one of our former museum directors. And I just wanted that, we should probably label that so no one, when, if we ever leave this building, that that thing doesn't-
We don't leave it behind?
No, it doesn't-
We take it out before the airstrike levels this building?
There you go. But it's, I never realized that until, actually, Don Lunsford pointed that out to me, that it was hand carved, and so it's something to be, we should treasure.
You don't play who?
It was David, do you remember his name?
I can't remember.
Tucker, was it Tucker?
Dave Tucker?
Yeah. Yeah, he was the county museum director.
I just want to assure our new colleague that not every board meeting starts with a history lesson.
I like the first verse.
It doesn't, not every-
I don't have to push.
It doesn't, doesn't-
Pretty much, they do, all start with a history lesson, by the way.
I make a lot of stuff up.
Ms. Schwab, is there, is there something that you need to add at this point?
Only to clarify that the flag was adopted by resolution of the Board, and under the government code, that means for it to change, it needs to come back once again to the Board for formal adoption.
And, and if we ever reach that point, then rest assured, it will be agendized, and all will be held to account for their-
And transparent.
And transparent, yes. All right, well, with that, anything else under the category of Board Member and County Executive Reports? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move into our first timed item. This is a 9/25 timed item where our Board is being asked to receive our annual report on our Placer County Older Adult Advisory Commission, as well as give a listen to the Health and Human Services five-year plan to address the needs of our growing senior population.
Good morning, Chairman Yule.
Members of the Board.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Colby Hightoff, and I'm a manager with Health and Human Services, Adult System of Care, Older Adult Services. We have two items to present to you today. First, I will be providing an update regarding Placer County's five-year plan for meeting the needs of a growing senior population. Then Jamie Horning, Chair of the Older Adult Advisory Commission, will be providing their annual report. Placer County's five-year plan for meeting the needs of a growing senior population was presented to the Board in January 2017, and was based on the World Health Organization's Global Age Friendly Cities Project, and the AARP Liveable Community Survey. Eight key domains of community life for older adults were identified and used to define communities as age-friendly. The Older Adult Advisory Commission is the voice of Placer County older adults, and has taken a lead role in developing and supporting the implementation of the county plan. This past year, the OAAC determined that four of the eight domains were significant areas of focus in Placer County. The four domains were communication and information, transportation, housing, and community and health services. These domains are prioritized and assigned to the commission's members for further needs assessment and advocacy, and are a focus of the OAAC's annual report. Health and Human Services, or HHS, has continued to support the OAAC and take steps to implement the five-year plan through the course of its work in the prioritized domains. I'd like to highlight some of that work. In regards to communication and information, we have identified that there are a substantial number of services and resources available to older adults in Placer County. However, many older adults are unaware of them or do not know how to access them. Placer County would benefit from a sustainable centralized point of contact for information and assistance. Many older adults are not tech savvy, don't utilize or have access to the internet, and prefer to pick up the phone and speak to someone when seeking information and assistance. Therefore, we continue to investigate models that provide this type of personal assistance, such as a two-on-one service, the Senior's First Information and Assistance Service, and Placer County Aging and Disability Resource Center, which was recently designated by the California Department of Aging. Approximately 18% of Placer County residents are aged 65 and older, and that number is expected to rise to 27% by 2040. As Placer County's older adult population continues to grow, the need for affordable housing and the likelihood of homelessness grows for this vulnerable population. As a leader in homeless outreach, intake, and assessment, HHS participated in the launch of a coordinated entry system, which provides a homeless resource telephone hotline to both Placer and Nevada Counties. This hotline serves as a centralized streamlined gateway for people who are homeless and in need of coordinated prioritized services. HHS also manages several programs that serve older adults who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Whole Person Care is a five-year pilot program that coordinates physical health, behavioral health, and social services for at-risk individuals who are high users of multiple services. Full Service Partnership provides intensive services to individuals with a serious mental illness. Services include crisis residential services, rent subsidies, and other supports that augment the HHS continuum of care provided to individuals at risk or experiencing homelessness. Recently, HHS was selected to participate in the state's three-year homelessness prevention demonstration grant program called HomeSafe. The goal of HomeSafe is to support the safety and housing stability of individuals involved in adult protective services by providing short-term housing-related assistance. With respect to community and health services, HHS continues to manage the in-home supportive services program, which helps pay for care services provided to older adults and people with disabilities, so that they can remain safely in their home. HHS currently serves approximately 3,320 in-home supportive services consumers residing in Placer County. This past year, HHS had the unique opportunity to partner with Each Mind Matters, an organization working to advance mental health in California. Aging may mean physical challenges, reduced income, and a shrinking social circle. These factors, plus unrecognized depression, place some older adults, especially older men, at risk for suicide. To increase suicide prevention awareness for older adults, HHS led an older adult suicide prevention campaign in Placer County with the support from Each Mind Matters. The campaign included informative presentations for community partners, a drop-in article in the Gold Country Media Paper, a billboard advertisement displayed in Auburn on I-80, and 5,000 brochures that are being disseminated across the county. HHS will continue to work collaboratively with Older Adult Advisory Commission to advance the county's plan to meet the needs of a growing senior population, and I look forward to providing the Board with future updates annually. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jamie Horning, current Chair of the Older Adult Advisory Commission and Senior's First Board President.
Hello. Honorable Chairman Yule.
Just press the button.
There you go.
They took care of it for me.
Okay. Honorable Chairman Yule and members of the Board, this report marks the 14-year anniversary of the Placer County Older Adult Advisory Commission, also known as the OAAC. Due to the increasing population of the older adult, of older adults 60 years of age and better residing in Placer County, it was in the interest of both the county and the older adult community to designate a commission to be responsible for advising the Board of Supervisors on issues affecting the lives of older adults. Therefore, on May 25th, 2004, the Placer County Board of Supervisors passed Resolution Number 2004-121, establishing the OAAC as Placer County's Commission on Aging. 14 years ago, it would have been hard to imagine that today, over 100,000 of our county residents would be over 60 years of age, representing 30% of our adult population. As we all know, the number is growing, and the projections would show that this older adult population will continue to grow dramatically for decades to come. Duties of the commission include submitting this report to the Board of Supervisors on activities of the Older Adult Advisory Commission. It has been a privilege to be a part of the OAAC for the past three years, and it is an honor to submit this 14th annual report on behalf of my fellow commissioners. During the 14th year, the OAAC has been, has continued to be actively involved in various organizational, advocacy, legislative, educational, and needs assessment activities. I would like to highlight a few of our accomplishments. OAAC members have continued to be involved and instrumental in the development and implementation of Placer County's Aging Disability Resource Connection, also known as an ADRC. An ADRC is a collaborative effort to streamline access to long-term services and support options for older adults and individuals with disabilities. And I am proud to announce, on December 1st, we received word from the California Department of Aging that Placer County has now been certified as a state-designated ADRC. We are number eight out of 58 counties in California. In addition, the commission co-sponsored and participated in third annual Placer Protect, Placer County Elder Abuse Awareness Event and Resource Fair, Preparing is Caring. It was held at the Roseville Galleria in June, and brought together Health and Human Services, county programs, nonprofits, and private businesses, all providing services and support to help older adults in Placer County. In 2017-18, the goals were focused on four of the eight domains, as Colby mentioned, number one being housing, two, transportation, three, communication and information, community and health information. Each commissioner selected a domain, and in those groups have focused their efforts on updating and accomplishing the goals set forth through the five-year plan for the older adults in Placer County. In addition, the commission formed an ad hoc committee to review and update the commission bylaws to reflect more defined roles, structure membership categories, and relationships with other county entities and departments, to assess the commission's adequacy in best serving the rapidly growing population of older adults in Placer County. Commission members participated and continued to support outreach to promote and recruit volunteers to expand Senior's First My Rides Volunteer Driver Program to help ensure residents in the Tahoe region have access to subsidized transportation. Fiscal year 2017-18 was a very good year for the OAAC. Members have brought renewed energy, commitment, and a new level of structure and organization to ensure the commission continues to fulfill its missions, mission to provide a voice and advocacy for Placer County senior residents. Myself and my fellow commission members are dedicated, driven, and committed to the continued success of the OAAC and support of the population we serve. And again, thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Any Board Members have any questions? Did you have anything else in follow-up?
No.
No, okay. Board Members have any questions or comments on what we've heard Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, excuse me, as an older adult, I need to answer your comments. Would you let us know what an ADRC is, please?
Yes, it's a coordinated system of care for individuals that are seniors or people with disabilities. And so, what it does is it forces the nonprofits and the county and all entities to work together to provide person-centered care for individuals needing those services. So, so basically, it's already, our county is great in that all of our nonprofits and our county workers and staff work really well together, and so it's really been kind of a seamless process because we're already doing it. So, it's really a benefit to all the people that we serve in the senior population, as well as those that suffer from disabilities. And I think with Eldon Lewis, as you probably all know, he has been the one that's advocated and pushed this forward, and so, and he's going to stay involved as well. So, you're going to see a lot of things to come with the ADRC.
Yeah, I asked that question on behalf of Eldon.
You did.
I know he's probably watching. You as a leader on that. Also, I have a resident in Ophir area that was concerned about some of the older people aging in place in the rural areas. Is there an outreach program to identify those folks and kind of find out?
Supervisor Holmes, I can speak a little bit to that. We have a great program called Senior Peer Counseling, and it's a free voluntary confidential program where, it's a peer-to-peer program where older adults volunteer their time, we have 16 of them, we call them peer counselors, they volunteer their time to go to other older adults' homes who are struggling with age-related issues, maybe the loss of a spouse, medical issues, social isolation, things like that. They live in a rural community, a rural area, and they're isolated, and they will go to their home and go and try to provide counseling and support them and provide referrals. So, they will go wherever needed and address some of the people you mentioned in the rural areas. We also have Adult Protective Services. We go to wherever the report leads us, we investigate abuse, elder and dependent adult abuse. When we receive a report, wherever it is, we go to their home, we investigate and provide services, we create a service plan and try to help them and meet their needs too. So, we do think very much about people in rural areas who are isolated.
So, how would those folks be able to be identified or know that there are services available?
Well, Adult Protective Services, we would typically receive a report through our hotline. So, perhaps a neighbor or a friend or a relative would make a report, and then we'd go to the home and respond. Senior Peer Counseling, they could also call the hotline and talk about a situation, and maybe we, the intake would mention the Senior Peer Counseling Program, and then we would contact that person and see if they're interested in a peer counselor coming to the home to visit them.
All right, and also a person that was concerned about their neighbor could-
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would also like to add that Senior's First offers a program called Information and Assistance, and it's a great program for anybody advocating on behalf of a senior or anybody that is a senior. They just call that hotline, and it's open Monday through Friday. Any resource that they need will be provided. Any resource that they need will be provided. And also on top of that, they're required to do a follow-up. It's funded through Older American Act funding, so they are required to follow up within two weeks to make sure that those resources helped. This really helps that vulnerable population because it keeps them on the radar. In addition, we also have Meals on Wheels, which is a hot home-delivered meal, Monday through Friday, delivered to seniors in Placer County. We have over 400 clients currently that we're serving have also a large waitlist. And then in addition, Seniors First has a call reassurance program. So if there's somebody out there that's concerned about a neighbor or a loved one, they just need to call Seniors First and get hooked up with those. We work very closely with the county. We're all mandated reporters. We file APS reports, and we work closely together. So definitely, one of the things that we've noticed is that there is a need to get the information out. That's one of our goals at the OAAC this coming year, is to get the information out as much as possible, do some town hall meetings, talk about the resources that are out there. We have a lot of amazing resources in this county, and the biggest problem is that some of the people that need it the most don't know about it. So that's our goal.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes. Any other questions or comments from other board members? Hearing none, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Well, hearing no voice is the contrary. Our board wants to thank you for your report, and we accept it without objection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to our... Yes, our 9:40 Public Works item. This is a public hearing to consider testimony, adopt a resolution to annex the Grass Burger property in Auburn into the boundaries of SMD 1.
All right. Good morning, board members. First, just like to echo everyone's kind of previous statements and welcome new appointees, the new chair, and also thank Supervisor Holmes for his time as Chair. My name is Jared Deck, and I'm here on behalf of the Environmental Engineering Division, and we're here for the Grass Burger annexation. So as stated in the board memo, the public hearing has been completed, and we're here to request the board adopt a resolution to annex parcel 052172004 into the boundaries of Sewer Maintenance District 1. The property is located along Crystal Springs Road within the city of Auburn. The Grass Burgers are requesting the annexation of the 1.5-acre parcel in order to provide sewer service to their property due to the failing septic system. If approved, the applicant will be required to pay the annexation fee in effect at the time they choose to make the payment. The current annexation fee is $6,344 per acre. This calculates to a total annexation fee of $9,516 for the 1.5-acre parcel. The staff supports this request, and in order to move forward, I request that the board adopt the resolution in the staff report to annex this parcel into the boundaries of Sewer Maintenance District 1. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to help.
All right, any questions by board members? Hearing none, we do need to conduct our own little public hearing right here, so we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing and see if there's any members of the public wish to address the board prior to us taking action. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion, Holmes, second, Wigan, to approve the annexation as proposed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. And we've got time to fit in a couple of department head items here before our 10 o'clock timed items. So let's kick it off with Health and Human Services. This is an item regarding rental subsidies, a grant agreement with Sutter Health Valley Area.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Yuler. Members of the board, Rob Oldham with Health and Human Services, here this morning requesting that your board approve a grant agreement with Sutter Health Valley Area in the amount of $1 million for the period of January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, for purchasing housing units and providing rental subsidies for homeless individuals in Placer County, and authorize the Director of HHS to sign the agreement and any related grant documentation with risk management and county council concurrence, and to accept grant funds. In addition, we ask that your board authorize the Director of HHS to sign subsequent amendments consistent with the grant agreement's subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. Just for background, Placer County Health and Human Services was awarded a Whole Person Care grant back, and it was approved by your board in October of 2016. This funding enhances services to high-risk persons with multiple needs, including chronic health conditions, mental health, substance use disorders, and/or persons experiencing homelessness. The Whole Person Care Pilot Program expands the types of services eligible for Medi-Cal funding to test whether these new services can improve outcomes and/or reduce the total cost of care for high-need beneficiaries. Research has consistently shown that expanding the availability of low-barrier housing results in better outcomes and reduces the overall cost of care for this population. However, federal Medi-Cal funding still cannot be used to pay for housing directly. As a result, Placer County Health and Human Services is working to identify every opportunity to expand housing funding sources for these most vulnerable populations. In 2016, Sutter Health provided the county with a $1 million investment to go toward the Whole Person Care housing effort, and has now recently informed the county of their interest to provide an additional $1 million of funding to continue to support Placer County's housing efforts. This investment is linked to Sutter Health Valley Area's Getting to Zero Campaign. Getting to Zero supports local Housing First programs with a goal of functionally ending homelessness in Sutter's service area, which includes western Placer County. Functional zero is defined as when the number of individuals experiencing a housing crisis is equal to or fewer than the number of permanent housing units available to them. The grant funds would support this goal by supporting rental subsidies and the purchase of housing units for Placer County Whole Person Care members facing housing crises. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions your board may have. Thank you.
Any questions, Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Doctor. I'm pleased with the results of the 2016 grant. We purchased two homes, is that...
That's correct, yes.
So this grant will allow rental subsidies. How would that program work?
So similar to the last, we have the flexibility in this to either provide rental subsidies or and/or purchase additional homes like we did in the initial grant. So this went previously through our procurement division and had a local not-for-profit, AMI Housing, who went and purchased those housing units. So it could be either for the purchase of additional houses or other housing units, as we're done with the previous $1 million, or for rental subsidies, or a combination of the two.
So would AMI do the rental subsidies as well?
So it'll be... Go through the procurement process. Again, there's an RFP that's being developed right now.
So the county wouldn't be doing the rental subsidies. We would contract with...
That's correct.
And that's advocates for mentally ill housing?
Yes, so they're the current recipient of the contract, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any representatives from Sutter here with us today?
I don't believe we have them here. They might be...
That's too bad. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, very much in support of this. Do we have a vision for geographically what areas we might be considering? I know that earlier monies have been used in the west end of the county.
Yeah, so it would have to be in Sutter's service area, which, you know, so unfortunately not for Tahoe. We'll kind of look at other things for that area, but I think it's relatively flexible just as Supervisor Holmes pointed out, the two houses that were purchased before, one was in kind of unincorporated north Auburn area, north of Auburn, and then the other was in Rockland, so likely kind of trying to have some up in the foothills and some town and further south.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're making sure that people have sort of better geographic opportunities to remain within their own communities, if possible.
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor Wigan?
Just want to take the opportunity, Rob, Jeff, and all of your staff at HHS, congratulations on some really great work. Obviously, the homeless issue is something that's getting a lot more attention these days nationally in California, and we've done some interesting things and had some big challenges, but I think with some great success in north Auburn, obviously, we wouldn't have gotten a second $1 million grant had we not done well with the first one in their eyes and emphasized Kirk's comments about Sutter not being here. But to them, thank you, but congratulations to staff doing such terrific work.
Great, thank you very much, Supervisor Wigan.
And any members of the public wish to address the board on this item prior to us taking any action? I don't see any. Please do pass along to the folks at Sutter our great appreciation for their commitment to us here in Placer, and I'm glad that they obviously think they are getting a good return on their investment if they've come back to do this again. So thank you for bringing this item to us. So we're being asked today to approve this grant agreement, authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement, any related grant documentation, as well as sign subsequent amendments consistent with the grant agreement.
I move items 5, A, 1, and 2.
Okay, motion, Montgomery, second, Holmes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will go ahead and take our 10 o'clock timed item. Our board is being asked to hear an appeal of a permit in variance on the Deerfield Caretaker Housing Unit.
Good morning, Chairman EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. I'm here with Patrick Dobbs. He will be presenting this third-party appeal of an approval of a caretaker's residence and variance. Patrick?
Good morning, Chairman Yuler and Supervisors. I am Patrick Dobbs from the Planning Services Division, and as EJ said, I'll be presenting the Deerfield Caretaker Unit Appeal. This is an appeal, a third-party appeal filed by Michael Garibedian on behalf of the Placer Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork. Mr. Garibedian is appealing the Planning Commission's decision to deny the appeal and approve the minor use permit in variance for the caretaker unit. It's located in Alta area in Supervisor Montgomery's District 5. It is upslope from the Caltrans Whitmore Station along Interstate 80 eastbound. To get to the property, you'd take the Drum For Bay exit and access it via Kersarge Mill Minor use permit for the caretaker unit was first approved 15 years ago. There were several extensions of time granted, and in 2009, a building permit was issued and construction commenced. Driveway was installed, a well was completed, as well as a building foundation. 2012, the county, as part of a farmworker housing package of amendments, the county established 1,200 square foot maximum for caretaker housing, consistent with other sort of accessory and ancillary uses, such as employee housing, accessory dwelling units and such. In 2013, the building permit was reissued, however, construction never recommenced. The building permit did expire in 2015, and after a year of the project area sitting idle, the minor use permit entitlement for the caretaker unit expired. In 2016, Mr. Deerfield bought the property thinking he had an entitled project and engineered This is what the property looks like from above. It is 66 and 1/2 acres. It is primarily a broad, flat ridge top, although there are steeper sections along where it borders the interstate. The base zoning is TPZ, Timberland Production Zone, so its intended purpose is to grow and harvest timber. It's very similar to the Williamson Act and other agricultural areas. No single-family dwellings are allowed in the TPZ zone. You can see from the vegetative pattern that there are areas of the property that are forested, and there are areas of the property that are not, and I will talk more about that in just a moment. This white box that you may see at the bottom of the screen is the building foundation. That's what this looks like on the ground. There is an 18-foot-wide access driveway with additional defensible space clearance on each side. Again, the building foundation, this is the foundation that Mr. Deerfield intends to build on and complete the project, and this is a photo of the domestic well. I mentioned that some areas of the property are very overstocked. There are some areas with more than 20 tons an acre of biomass and duff on the ground. There are areas that need thinning and fuel reduction, so there is a tremendous amount of work to do in terms of forest management. And I mentioned as well that there are other areas of the property that are barren and denuded. This was work done by a previous property owner who massacred and graded some sections of the property, but really didn't follow up on any treatment to convert that area into timberland, and so now you see these areas exhibiting regrowth of flammable brush and azanita, et cetera. So I'll transition into the project description and the questions that are before you today. First, is the establishment of a caretaker unit warranted and justified in this case? As I mentioned, TPZ does not allow single-family dwellings. One of the requirements for a caretaker unit is 24-hour oversight of the primary use of the property. State law recognizes that caretaker units are compatible with TPZ zoning. There are two forest management plans for the property. There is a forest management plan prepared in 2004, and we asked Mr. Deerfield to update the forest management plan in 2018, which he did. Both of these forest management plans recommend onsite caretaker units to implement the active forest management that needs to be done. This is to improve the commercial timber yield, as well as reduce wildfire threat, prevent trespass and theft, et cetera. So if you believe that the caretaker unit is warranted, the second question we're asking you is, are there special circumstances that justify a variance? As I mentioned, there is a 1,200-square-foot maximum floor area for these accessory uses. It is a proposed three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath caretaker unit, 3,126 square feet of living area. There's an attached 1,039-square-foot garage and a 1,487-square-foot wraparound porch. It's the same house that's been proposed since 2004. The project was first heard by the zoning administrator in July of 2018. There were letters of opposition received before the hearing from the Placer Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork, as well as the Public Interest Coalition. There was public testimony at the hearing, both in support and against the project. Mr. Deerfield spoke during the hearing and talked about how he supports a family of 10, and based on the previous history and construction, the zoning administrator felt that the forest management plans had demonstrated the need for the caretaker unit, and he did not feel that it was unreasonable for 10 people to share 3,126 square feet of living area to manage 66 acres. Mr. Garibedian appealed the zoning administrator's decision to the Planning Commission, and in July, or October, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission systematically discussed the points of appeal. There was a lengthy discussion, these issues of will Mr. Deerfield pay his fair share in taxes, whether security warranted this 24-hour oversight. These were the considerations and the kind of areas that got the primary traction. The Planning Commission did feel that Mr. Deerfield had hired qualified credentialed professionals to prepare the report, and it was a permitted foundation. They saw no benefit to cutting that foundation in half or something to the effect of moving it. Based on a 5-1 vote, the Planning Commission denied the appeal and upheld the zoning administrator's decision to approve the minor use permit in variance. Mr. Garibedian raises a number of issues in the appeal. These are the highlights. Taxes has been a topic of discussion, whether this project justifies a lack of full-time oversight. He questions the CEQA exemption we're using and whether the project is economically viable. He asked us to complete a more comprehensive TPZ analysis countywide, which is...
You don't need to go through all of them. I'm sure Mr. Garibedian will get to them.
The analysis is in Appendix G of your packet. We responded to all these points and are prepared to discuss our responses further. So your Planning Commission, this appeal was properly noticed. There were no new public comments received. Your Planning Commission recommends that you deny the appeal filed by Michael Garibedian on behalf of the Placer Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork, and uphold the Planning Commission's action to deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve the Deerfield Minor Use Permit in variance, supported by the findings stated in the staff report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can answer your question.
Great. Any board members have any questions, the staff at this point? I see Supervisor Holmes?
Was the 2004 approval, did that go to the Planning Commission? Was it approved through the Planning Commission, or was it strictly the staff approval?
It was Supervisor Holmes, it was approved by the zoning administrator. This is not a staff-level approval. The approval for caretakers is discretionary to ensure that any additional development stays secondary to that primary timberland use.
So 2004...
Zoning Administrator.
It didn't reach the level of the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors?
No, it did not.
Okay, thank you.
And Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of just... We do like to do a lot of history here, so a little bit of history. Actually, the 2012 action that we took, and the four of us were here at the time, was actually specific to another TPZ issue that came up. It wasn't actually anything to do with farmworker housing. It was another project that was proposed, the Gillis Ridge, the Camel's Hump Project, and the concern that the... the Gillis Ridge, the Camel's Hump project, and the concern that the board expressed at the time was conversion of TPZ lands from their intended use, which is timber production, to, you know, essentially lovely places for people to build really big homes and, and not manage for timber, which is one of the agricultural commodities that we're pretty committed to here in Placer County. So just as a little bit of history, that was very specific, that action, to a TPZ request to allow for construction of a significantly larger home than we felt at the time made sense for that property. I think it's important to note as well that the five-to-one vote, the, the one individual who voted against that was a U.S. Forest Service retired forester. Is that correct?
Yes, District Three Commissioner Richard Johnson is a retired forester, and he felt that the applicant should focus more on contracting the work out instead of trying to take it on himself.
Okay. And then the, just so we're clear, there was a lot of square footage numbers thrown around there. The actual living space that's being proposed is 3,126 square feet with an additional attached 1,039 square foot garage?
That's correct.
Okay, and then a, a covered porch, wraparound, is that screens? I mean, do we have any idea what's that intended to be?
Um, it's, it is covered. There are eaves over it. It, it's intended to just kind of fit in with this log cabin-style home that was designed.
So we're talking ultimately around 50, 500?
5,652 square feet of impact area. Again, the limitation is on living area.
Okay. Those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more questions by the board at this time, we are being asked to act on an appeal, so we will hear from the appellant, Mr. Garabedian. Mr. Garabedian's staff was able to do their presentation in eight minutes and five seconds, so I'm going to give you 10 minutes for your presentation.
Not enough time. Certainly do my best and request more time if necessary. I think the key item I intend to start out with after a few notes could take that long. First of all, Mike Garabedian, representing Placer Group Sierra Club and Friends of the North Fork. The, I'm going to present the caretaker focus primarily because, of course, because the application of all enforceable restriction issues in the county is endangered by this action, and I will explain. So, why is that? Because there's nothing to indicate in the staff report that planning understands enforceable restrictions or that they will enforce them. And when we're talking about enforceable restrictions, we're talking about conservation easements governed by the same provision of the Constitution that isn't mentioned anywhere in the staff report, even though we've raised it repeatedly in our appeals and in meetings. Conservation easements, Williamson Act contracts, and TPZ zone parcels. So, a couple of notes at the outset. This application may require a Public Resource Code 4621 conversion request to CAL FIRE. Have not reviewed this. I don't have an opinion on that. Haven't reached a conclusion. It may in effect be an immediate rezoning request, Government Code 51130. Also have not reviewed that. It may in effect be that. Now, the, the issue I'm going to focus on is the enforceable restriction. I have a handout here with items that are drawn significantly from the staff report, from your staff report. It has a number of items. Let's see, should I give these to you? I think I have more than enough to go around. So, the first item here, number one, top of page one, the California Constitution, Article 13, Section 3J. I've highlighted the parts that, the parts that talk about timber taxation. I'm not, I'm not going to read that part, but it, that is, reflects the practice before the Timber Tax Reform Act of 1976 was passed. Item two is the enforceable restriction provision. It was enacted on a ballot, statewide ballot measure, and I will, I will read it. "To promote the conservation, preservation, and continued existence of open space lands, the legislature may define open space land and shall provide that when this land is enforceably restricted in a manner specified by the legislature to recreation, enjoyment of scenic beauty, use or value for conservation natural resources, production of food or fiber, it shall be valued for property tax purposes only on a basis that is consistent with its restrictions in the use." Now, the Williamson Act was passed the next year in 1975, and then the year after that, the Tax Reform Act that created the TPZ was passed in 1976. So item three is a excerpt from the, the legal case that went to the California Supreme Court, Sierra Club versus City of Hayward. And I've just repeated here, key sections of the Sierra Club decision that have, have a universal application to enforceable restrictions. That case was about an immediate rezon, which is not what's proposed here. So then, the next three points, number four, this is the section in the, in the Timber Tax Reform Act. Land zoned as timberland production under this chapter shall be enforceably restricted when the meaning of the first item number one of the Constitution, so that, this is the section, the legislature says, okay, this is an enforceable restriction, the TPZ law. The next section is the Williamson Act section that basically says the same thing. The Williamson Act is governed by the enforceable restrictions of the Constitution, Article 13, Section 8. Item number six has, is the Civil Code section that refers to conservation easements, and so the conservation easement, et cetera, et cetera, governed by purposes, it refers to the Revenue and Taxation Code, but it describes it as enforceable, enforceable restriction also covered. And of course, the danger here is that if, if the, if the county isn't going to respect enforceable restrictions on this, are they going to do it? They may not do it on any other things, including conservation easements done by the Placer legacy. You know, they have, those, those can't be changed. You can't go in and seek a variance for them. If you can get a variance on the TPZ, are you going to get it? Is somebody going to be seeking variances on those? So, understanding this is critical. Number six, number six and number seven are the legislative intent for the TPZ law. And number, I'll, I'll read one of them here, the first part. "The state's increasing population threatens to erode the timberland base and diminish forest resource productivity through pressures to divert timberland to urban and other uses and through pressures to restrict and prohibit timber operations, et cetera." Well, that's exactly what's happening in this case. It's approval, it's been proved by the, the zoning administrator and agreed to by a 4-1 vote, I think it was, of the Planning Commission to, to do that exactly, put an urban-type use on a TPZ property. Number, number, number two continues the legislative intents, intent here. Maintain the optimum amount of the limited supply of timberland to ensure it's current. There should be no doubt in anyone's mind, I know there is a doubt in some people's mind in this room, that by, by, that what the action has done may lead to tax evasion, and I will get into that. The, then, the, the next four provisions are, are at issue in this appeal that for some reason, the, the staff ignores them. I don't know why. The, let's go to number two. The parcels, let's see, this is B12, page four, two paragraphs on the bottom. "The parcel shall currently meet the timber stocking standards as set forth in section so-and-so of the Public Resources Code. There is no question that this parcel does not, and has not for quite a while, met the stocking standards. It hasn't." And this, this owner's had it for two years and hasn't done anything on stocking standards, from what we're told. And so, the forest management plan, what does it do? The forest management plan recommends, in the first year, that was last year, that there was a need to spend $7,000 to plant seedlings on that property. It hasn't been done. Now, why did that have to be done? So that within five years, the property would meet stocking standards. It hasn't been done. Now, this, the, the other key section here that just falls on deaf ears, I don't understand it. There are two provisions for the county to act to take this out of TPZ, and we're going to talk about the one, the last, the last paragraph on the bottom of page six. If, in the second paragraph, "If the parcel fails to meet timber stocking standards," and this is after five years, "the board or council, council shall immediately rezon the parcel and specify a new zone, which is conformance, et cetera." If you, if, if you, if you, the only way, if you were going to approve this, we don't think it should be approved. We think it should be sent back to the Planning Commission to, to do the work unless they haven't done. But if you were going to approve it today, you would have to change it. The law requires the applicant to sign a contract, to sign an agreement that he will bring it up to stocking in five years. He has to do that. You can't get around that, and the provision that requires that is here. And then if he doesn't in five years, because it's five years from the signing of the agreement, then you have to take it right out of TPZ. So, the, the last page has to do with the general plan, the Forest Resources Plan. It certainly seems clear that this action would create a significant conflict between forestry and residential development. It's not supposed to under the plan. It would incentivize individual and corporate landowners to sell forest land for large houses. Let me ask you this. If you are an individual, or if you're a company with, with shareholders, to what extent are you going to, how can you convince your shareholders that you can continue to make money, should continue to have that land in forest operation, forest income, when you can sell it to somebody who could put a caretaker house on it for vastly more money? This, the staff, the, the key, key issue on this point is what is, the caretaker house has already been approved. There is a higher taxation by the assessor for the area where the house, where the foundation is, and if a house is built there, it will be taxed, that house will be taxed at its full value where it would be on any piece of property. What the assessor does is if, when there's a TPZ, they, they draw a circle around it of an acre or two, and that land also gets taxed, taxed at more of a development potential taxation value. In this case, there were 62 more acres. Right now, a year or two ago, they were paying less than $2 for those, each, each acre, and they may, they may be paying, according to some staff, they may be paying as little as $1 an acre for that. Now, that is where we're talking about asking, asking you to allow tax evasion, because this, this property not only is, is not entitled to that tax break. The rest of the taxpayers of the county are entitled to have that person pay his fair share of taxes.
Mr. Garabedian, going to ask you to wrap it up at this point.
Well, okay, I'll wrap up on the enforceable. I will need further time to respond, of course, and talk about other issues.
To the extent there are questions of you, you will be given time to respond.
Well, I disagree with that, because we filed this appeal. 10 minutes is not enough time to present-
Mr. Garabedian, you've had more time than staff. You spent a good portion of your time addressing items that you said that you weren't actually going to speak to, so you've had plenty of time to address the items that you have under appeal. If you'd wrap up your comments right now, we will then hear from the applicant and board members who have any questions, and you'll have an opportunity to respond.
Well, I couldn't disagree with you. Your point says to me, it's essential for you to deny the appeal, do whatever you have to do to send it back, so these issues will not take your time, but so the Planning Commission will do the work on this. What you need in this, and I can tell you from my experience on interpreting and working on the Williamson Act for four and a half years with assignments for the Department of Conservation, that to answer these questions, you need three people involved working on this diligently. You need the staff person, the policy, the staff person like Mr. Dobbs. You need the policy person or the executive who's there on policy, and you need counsel working intricately with them back and forth. The counsel can't do it themselves. The staff can't do it themselves. They need to figure out how to interpret the law and how, how to make it work, and that is not, not happening here. So-
Was there a final point in summary?
The final point is, we certainly need more time.
Okay.
The, if, if, there's not a way to summarize it at this point, because we haven't finished making our basic points.
Okay.
The, the key thing is that, if, if there's anything we could say at this point, is the need to have this done properly, sent back, and have a chance for the applicant and, and the staff to get the expert forestry input they need to, to the county, to the county from an expert forester who understands it. And you should not be short-circuiting our appeal here, sir. We paid $602, and that's not, that's, you know, not very much for 10 minutes. That's a lot to pay for only 10 minutes.
Thank you. County Council, was there anything that you heard that you would like to respond to?
Several things. First of all, the appellant appears to be arguing that what we're dealing with here is either a request for immediate rezon out of the TPZ, or a request to convert, which is actually a 10-year rollout period. Neither of those recus has been made through a formal application, which is what's required to do that. What's before the board today is an appeal of a decision ultimately by the zoning administrator to approve a minor use permit which is required for a caretaker unit in the TPZ zone. I'd point out the issues of taxation. There is a, a tax, for lack of a better word, tax break that's given to both the Williamson Act contract-type lands and the TPZ contract-type lands. But it's important to note that under the Constitution and the tax formula, there are certain uses that are considered compatible with the TPZ, and one of those that's stated directly in the Constitution is a caretaker unit. Now, the issue before the board also, which by the way, this is a de novo hearing on the minor use for, in the variance, the variance is required because the county did change its maximum square footage requirement to 1,200 while this permit was sitting in its, its lifetime. And the variance now is to determine whether it is appropriate and whether the board can make findings that there are special circumstances to warrant the approval of that kind of variance. So, all the issues that I've heard, and the Sierra Club is not really on point in this issue, because we're not dealing with a rollout, we're not dealing with a request for conversion, minor use permit variance. I'm happy to answer any other questions of the board, and if I hear other issues, I'll, I'll jump in and clarify.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, for counsel, just a clarification. You indicated that the 2012 action took place when there was a, a permit that was live, for lack of a better term. The building permit expired in March of 2015. Is that correct?
Staff is indicating-
March of 2015? Is that, is that right?
Right.
I'm just checking the dates, but yes, I believe you're-
2015, it appears.
Okay, and then the, the minor use permit expired in March of 2016, a year after the-
That's right.
-building permit. And the property was purchased when?
Escrow closed on September 2nd of that year, so almost, you know, five and a half, six months later.
So escrow closed roughly six months after both permits were no longer active?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board members before we hear from the applicant?
I'd like to say that I opened my talk by saying that I am not addressing conversion or the other issues. We are directing whether this use is compatible with TPZ, which is not, as an, as an urban use. And regarding the 2012 Camel's Hump caretaker's cottage, that was proposed to be very large. The zoning code limits to 1,200 feet. In that case, 1,800 feet was, was approved. Not that we supported that, but compared to what's being act here, that was reasonable under the circumstances of a 600-acre parcel with a property next door, also in, in TPZ.
Okay, thank you. The applicant wished to address the board, make a statement to answer any questions. Please feel free to step forward at this time.
Hello, thank you for giving me the time to come up here and speak to you. I want to start off in-
All right. Your, your name for the record, please, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, Shad Deerfield, property owner.
Thank you.
Want to start out by addressing the fact of the county not spending the time on this, on this project. Patrick Dobbs has, I've probably spoken to him, gosh- Patrick Dobbs has, I've probably spoken to him, gosh, hours after hours trying to put together what is right for the property. He's done his due diligence through the process. He's been to the property multiple times. I've been out there with him, walking the property, we've driven the property. So, I just wanted on record that I, I believe the county has done their job. I think Patrick Dobbs has done a great job, and should be commended for it. I think that throwing him under the bus, or the county under the bus, saying that, basically that they haven't done their job is ridiculous. I believe this whole process, this really has gone for over two years. It's the most ridiculous thing I've ever been through in my life. The Sierra Club, every time this man has got up, has made no sense through his process. I sit back and take notes, trying to figure out what he is saying after every appeal that he has done, trying to figure out what their point is, and what organization he really actually does represent. Furthermore, I would probably have more respect for the organization in this situation if he wouldn't wait until the last hour. Every single appeal that he puts in, he waits till the last hour to file. If it's 30 days, he comes 30 days right to the hour. And to me, it's just absolutely ridiculous. The man has hurt my family, that we bought a property. At the time, we did, Supervisor Montgomery, I think you made a point of when it was purchased, and about the permit and the MUP. I did my due diligence. I spoke to the county, I have emails from the county building department that clearly stated that I would be fine, that I can continue the permit. The property was purchased with the plans, foundation started with a well, and that was the, the reasoning to be able to come forward, move my family up there, and be able to harvest the property, and maintain a safe environment for, for fire danger. I spoke with the building department, everything was fine, we went through with the ESCO process. Unbeknownst to the building department, they did not know that a foundation started and a permit being signed off on that foundation going to the next process of framing, which would be the next process, is a full framing of it. And as you see, it already has a subfloor on, on the foundation. They didn't know that that didn't, that it expired at the time. And that was the comments I got back from the county, that they apologized, they did not realize that there was expiration to that process. They felt that once the foundation was in place, that you were good, and it would not, the minor use permit would not expire. Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to hurt anyone within the county. I think I very much respect them. They did what they thought was the right approach to it. Obviously, the, the county rules are stats of, of rules, and they just didn't know that, that that occurred. As a matter of fact, through this whole process, over two-year period, I've talked to multiple county employees who are shocked that they never knew that once you have a permit and sign-off does not continue the existence of that minor use permit. So, this is not just one county employee, this was a whole process. The previous owners, the Lorrains, same situation. They did their due diligence, and they were told that, "You're okay, don't worry about it, you can continue on because you have a signed permit to move you forward and, and be able to issue the minor use permit." With that said, they received a letter once we did take purchase of, take possession of the property. They did receive a letter from the, I believe it was the county building, that was basically stating that we need to move forward with the building, because there was, there was code requirements. So, even in that letter, it was, it was addressed to the Lorrains, because they didn't get the transfer that, "You need to build the property, because right now, we're, we're considering a code enforcement action, so we need that property to continue, we need the permit to continue, to finish this property and finalize it." So, even with that, a letter, they, the individual has sent this letter, and the, and the code enforcement division didn't even realize that, that that occurred. You know, zoning commissioner was, did his due diligence. Every one of these processes, you know, both the zoning commissioner and the planning allowed Mr. Garabedian to, to take over an hour to go through this whole process, which again goes, at the end of it, I walk away trying to figure out what's being said, what the, what the point is to, to his case. But the zoning commissioner and the planning commissioner went through everything as they were appointed to do so. They were appointed by you, the planning commission, zoning commissioner was appointed by, appointed by, I believe it's by the director of the planning commission, and they did their due diligence. It's not like they sat back and just said, "Fine, it's approved." They, we were there, my gosh, I think we were there at the planning commission, it was four hours going through this. Yeah, the, the bottom line is, the planning commission a 5-1 approval. You talk about the, the forester, really all he said was that he would recommend that it gets rezoned to residential, and I believe it was forest, and move on that direction with it, that it really is, is not characteristic, because of the land size for what the normal TPZ size is. My last comment is that he, he just made a comment on public record that I haven't planted, as was stated in the forest plan that Kevin Whitlock did, the forester that we hired. I'm trying to figure out how he knows that. He's already, in the last meeting, commented that he trespass. I made the comment in, on, on record that he's not allowed to come on the property. The neighbor next to him that he's kind of spoke to, they're trying to get him to come forward and, and talk against the project, is not allowed to come on the property. So, I just, I leave you with, I, how does he know that there was, there was planning going on? I just, I don't understand where he comes up with this. But the bottom line is, anyone in my position would sit here, not knowing where to go forward with this. When you're, when you're being left through a 30-day process every time, and then waiting to get onto agenda, trying to figure out where your family's left with, with a property that you have money out on, what would you do? So, I leave you with that. I apologize for taking so much time, I do appreciate your time, and I hope you see our side of it, and continuing the denial of his appeal and moving forward to, to approve our caretaking quarters. Thank you.
Any questions by board members of Mr. Deerfield? I see none at this time, thank you very much. Okay, questions or comments by board members of staff, before I open it up to the public on this item?
Yeah. Supervisor Montgomery? I did twice watch the planning commission hearing, much to my husband's horror, over the weekend. And this issue of, I, I think it's just important to address, I don't think it's specifically germane to today's conversation, but this allegation that, that Mr. Garabedian trespassed, I understood Mr. Garabedian to say he walked the perimeter of the property with the adjoining neighbor, and, and he, he walked the boundary of the property. Was that your interpretation of his statement as well?
Yes, Supervisor Montgomery, I think it's a misunderstanding. I don't believe Mr. Garabedian has been on Mr. Deerfield's property.
Okay, thank you. And that was my impression from having watched and listened to the, the planning commission twice, and I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. But it was certainly my understanding that Mr. Mr. Garabedian was not saying that he had trespassed on the property, but had looked at it from a surrounding property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other questions or comments from board members, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item?
Is it morning? Yeah. Good morning. My name is Marilyn Jasper, I'm speaking on behalf of Public Interest Coalition. Our two-page letter is near the end of the 168-page staff report, and in our opinion, it provides compelling evidence to overwhelmingly prove that this is a woefully non-compliant, ill-advised timberland production zone, TPZ, project, that must be sent back for revision or proper rollout, or immediate revocation for noncompliance. In July's zoning administrator's staff report, it is noted that the project subjects, subjects residents to, quote, "unreasonable health and safety risks," unquote, not only in part due to steep slopes, but also due to biomass and DUF buildups. Even worse, that staff report characterized it as, quote, "very high fire severity." And the Forest Management Plan, the FMP, labeled it, quote, "hazardous." This is not a place for a non-conforming, huge residence with a large family. Beyond the TPZ violations and noncompliant issues, one of the most egregious aspects of this project is directly related to the recent tragic wildfires in the state. Catastrophic fires pushed one insurance company into bankruptcy, and the blaming has expanded. First, the blame was aimed at PG&E, then at a few property owners who may have made non-permitted changes that violated safety codes. Now, the blame is being aimed at county governments for allowing and approving family homes to be built in fire-prone or wildland interface, urban interface areas, wooey. At your November meeting, in explaining his non-support of a, another variance agenda item, Supervisor Holmes rightfully recognized the, quote, "slippery slope," and noted that it just opens doors for others, in other words, sets precedent. This project epitomizes the necessity for everyone to follow the law, comply with the codes, and for agencies to do their part in enforcing the provisions. We urge you to approve the appeal, send the project back for revision to properly comply with state law and county codes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, thanks for letting me have an opportunity. I'm Larry Jordan, I'm your appointed representative to the Placer County Ag Commission on Timber. There's a couple of issues here that, that denial, the permit should not go forward. It does not require, does not meet two things. One, primary residences are not permitted in a TPZ period. It says a caretaker residence only, not a resident. And it's supposed to be 66 acres. It is 66, it's supposed to be a minimum of 100 acres. I think what this needs to do is be sent back through the channels, it needs to come up with a timeframe of who's going to do what and when. As a commissioner, I visit each and every Williamson Act or TPZ when they come up, and a lot of them do not meet the requirements. And I think it needs to have a vehicle where those can be checked. Williamson Act requires 4,500 acres of gross income every year. We're not checking that. I think that the Ag Commission should be refunded, or whatever it is, so that they can actually check these things and see what the deal is. Because right now, I feel that I, as a taxpayer, I'm subsidizing a lot of people that are getting a, a tax-free ride, that they don't deserve. We've seen this a couple, three times, where things have come out, one just recently in Granite Bay, where the property owner said he bought the property, put it in the Williamson Act with the full intent of taking it out immediately. It passed. I feel real bad for the Deerfields. There is a good argument for being on-site, would be better for the property than, than nobody on-site, and I have visited the property. I think it should go back, there should be some timeline set, and it should be done. So, therefore, I would hope that you will uphold this appeal and do it right, because if we don't, we're just going to have backdoor development, which is exactly what this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Anybody else wish to address the board on this item? Go ahead, if you want to, if you look like you're wanting to, so step on up.
I don't really want to, but I feel I need to. I'm a neighbor of the Deerfield...
I need you to identify yourself and speak a little more.
Tyler Ellenwood.
Okay.
And this property protects the residents around it. I'm not sure if you could bring up the math on the deal? And I've sort of got a speech issue, so it's not just about being...
One thing I would ask you to do, though, is step a little closer to the microphone, just so that we can hear you, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
So, you can see all the little squares, they all abut the Deerfield project. And if you were to look at it eight years ago, before the Lorrains cleared it of brush, it was a disaster. It was nine feet high, in, in pure brush. And if you look at it, what it is now, it's clear, so firefighters can protect all those little, could we go back to that one with the little squares? All those small squares are homes, most of them. And that piece right there protects those ones plus the ones on the other side. So, part of the way that property ended up with no trees was a fire started on 80 in '63, and went through that whole side, over the complete end of it. Cleared almost every tree. And now they're coming back. Now, as far as him saying that they're not restocking, it naturally restocks. The trees shed acorns, or whatever the right word is, and they grow. But if you let them all grow, it's not a good thing. So, that's where you have to go out and pull the ones that are not in a good spot. So, I would, yeah, it definitely is a full-time job, so, for more than one person. Most of those little squares don't defend their own space. That parcel defends them first. The fire will start on 80 and go right up that hill, but it will be stopped right on his land. So, for that reason alone, I would grant that, because he's saving the county money. And as far as the, the tax rate thing, he's taxed on the resident house part and the land that it takes up. So, the statements that he used, tried to make this a screwed-up thing for them is baseless. And along the line, he's lost his dad, and that was one of the reasons he bought that place. So, his dad won't get to see that. Does that mean I'm done?
Your three minutes are up.
What's it?
I said, yes, your three minutes are up.
Okay.
But thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. Is there any questions? I mean, I, I'm familiar with...
I don't see anybody having any questions for you. Thank you very much. Any other members of the public before we close public comment? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Mr. Garabedian, as the appellant, is there any final comments you've had based on what you've heard?
Couple of points. Where is the forester? The forester has not been at any of the hearings, including this one. That is the only person who can answer the questions accurately about what's going on in that property and what its capability is. Both of them have recommended going ahead and planting. The, the staff report says the soil needs to be rebuilt or refurbished. That may be something the applicant told them, but that is not what the foresters say. It's ready to go, it's ready to plant. There's been no statement at all that they've done any planting, planting, and in the past, at the other hearings, it's been indicated that he was not going to do it for various reasons. The, the, we should take a moment to talk about the Carruthers TPZ on Iron Point, a 48-acre parcel that was approved by a Board of Supervisors by unanimous vote, and...
Garabedian, do you have any comments to wrap up based on what you've heard other people raise? This is not the time to be making new points.
Okay, well, the applicant makes it very clear, and we have discussed this with, with Mr. Dobbs, who has certainly been more than generous with his time. I have no criticism of him personally, it's not his, not fault that he's not getting the necessary training or legal input.
I'm sure he appreciates your compliment.
Oh, he's more than generous. But the, the statements by the applicant indicate what is evident, there is no brochure in there, if somebody has TPZ land on the wall, the far wall, what, what they have to go through and what the requirements are to get. what the requirements are to get a home of some kind, you know, a caretaker on TPZ land. And from what Mr., the applicant says, there are all kinds of people working for the county who have no idea what the heck an enforceable restriction is and what happens on TPZ land. There may be nobody at that counter, who knows, that can tell somebody accurately when they come up and talk about their property, what they can and can't do and what the requirements are, like having the stocking, and if you don't make it, you're kicked out of TPZ for good after five years. And no one explained it to. It's not our fault. And he personalizes everything. There's no reason to respond to all these personal comments, because if the forester were here, we'd all have somebody to ask these questions. You need to develop, the county needs to go back on this, and you need to develop a, not just a brochure, but you need to train and educate the people so they know what TPZ is. The map, the map with all those little parcels, it shows that this is an urbanizing area. It shows that this parcel, this parcel has to do his fire protection development regardless if it's in TPZ or not in TPZ. But it shows that putting another house there is putting more urban, turning that, making that parcel, making it very clear that it's an urban parcel and an urban area, it has no business, probably no business being in TPZ. And if you also look at that map, the map that I submitted for the, on page 33, that map shows the adjacent, the nearby TPZ parcels in the area. And those parcels are basically 80 acres, 70 acres. They surround this. And this, the parcel, the parcel adjacent to it that touches on it down, westward down the highway, that parcel was applied for, applied for a caretaker house at the same time as this parcel. Same people, they did the same application, same day to get a caretaker. And that house, that house got built there, and it's there. The point here is that this is, this is not an area that you can, that is going to stay in forest area. It's not like the area across the street, which is not TPZ, but it's 160 acre parcels. Now.
Mr. Garabedian, any final comments based on what was raised by the applicant?
Let's see. Biomass. Biomass includes the volume.
Did the applicant raise a biomass issue?
Everybody raised the biomass. A couple of people raised biomass.
Mr. Garabedian, any final comments based on what was raised by the applicant?
Biomass includes the forest trees. It's not just duff on the ground, that there's an implication that there's something weird going on with piled up duff. No, it includes, includes the volume of timber on the land.
Thank you, Mr. Garabedian. You've had ample time.
And we have not been told of any planting at all. No one has said anything. It's been, the forester said nothing. There's nothing said that there's been any planting at all on this land.
Thank you, Mr. Garabedian.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will bring it back to the board for any additional questions or staff or comments, and then subsequent action. Mr. Weigant?
Just a couple of questions for clarity. One of them is probably a silly question, but we all know me, so just want to make sure I'm clear. The TPZ provides for a caretaker's house of 1,200 square feet with a minor use permit, correct?
Yes, Supervisor Weigant, that's correct.
And so the question before us is that minor use permit as well as a variance to the size, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then I want to validate, I'm looking to, I've been looking through this, and I apologize, probably more clearer, but I want to make sure that everybody and I understand. The properties, I would describe the properties in and around this property as being somewhat unusual for TPZ in that there are sort of a few isolated, historically smaller TPZ properties. You know, typically, they're much larger, I think, in Placer County, and they should be. But this is sort of interfaced with a bunch of more traditionally suburban-sized lots, I think. Would you describe that as being accurate in terms of the landscape in and around the property?
Yes, Supervisor Weigant, I mean, large contiguous tracts are better suited for forest management. This is a slide, again, I think it's Appendix G in your packet, that shows generally these are large sections of land. These remnants, if you will, fragmented pieces appear to be a result of construction of Interstate 80 and kind of broken off of the larger holdings, in this case, across the street, which are held by PG&E and the Drum Forbay Hydroelectric Plant.
And then the timber harvest plan, staff looked at that thoroughly, and you're satisfied, I'm presuming, want to get that on the record or learn one way or the other, that you think that on this particular property, noting that it's a smaller TPZ property, in light of what you just described, you think the plan that has been provided is appropriate, adequate?
Yes, sir. Timber harvest plan is something slightly different than a forest management plan. Timber harvest plan is the functional equivalent of an EIR, and that's, and that is approved through CAL FIRE. This forest management plan is more of a roadmap. It's knowledge, and it was prepared by a registered professional forester. Again, we have two forest management plans, which is more than we have on some other TPZ properties. But yes, we feel that the plan was adequate, and that qualified professionals were hired to do the work.
Thanks. Those are my questions.
Okay. Just a point of clarification on Supervisor Weigant's question. The variance issue, the variance to the square footage, when the 1,200 square foot limitation on the caretaker's residence, that's our county's. That is not codified anywhere else, right?
That's correct.
And that was adopted by the county when?
In 2012.
And this original permit for this size house was originally issued?
2004. Or the building permit was 2009, but the entitlement was 2004.
Okay. So all of that was done prior to the board then saying, okay, we're going to limit it to 1,200 square feet, and our board has a history of grandfathering things in. The issue here, of course, is that those, that permit did expire. I understand that. Okay. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's important for us, as supervisors, Weigant and Ullor have just sort of gone over, to really understand what it is we're being asked to do today. And what it is, is we are being asked to ignore the decisions we made in 2012 about what we felt was appropriate for TPZ zoning. And we can certainly do that. We have that authority as a board. I think the question becomes, you know, what is our intention around TPZ zoning? And do we want to create a slippery slope? Or do we want to say, no, we really do support this vision that we have identified as a board for timber production in Placer County? Admittedly, it's a small piece of TPZ land at, you know, 66 acres. Admittedly, it's probably a fragment of what was a very much larger property before Interstate 80 cut through it. But if our commitment is truly to timber production in Placer County and making sure that it remains an ongoing financial benefit to our county, then we should not be undercutting our own ordinances and our own regulations around this. And for that reason, I'm going to, you know, make a motion that we actually uphold the appeal and that we send this back to the planning commission. And they can make a recommendation, or the property owner can choose to pull it out of its existing zoning immediately. I just think that if we move forward and say we're not going to uphold the appeal, we're really undercutting our own arguments for timber production in Placer County, and I see a very negative outcome out of that.
Okay. I see County Council has turned on her light. Is your light in regard to the motion that was made? Because otherwise, I'm going to wait for a second on the motion.
It is in regard to the follow-up to the motion.
Okay, well, hold on that. First, I'm going to wait to see if there's a second on the motion. Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Supervisor Holmes, your light was on.
I just wanted to let you know where I stand on this. The original approval was in 2004 for this allowed square footage. And it was not appealed from the zoning administrator, the planning commission, nor to the Board of Supervisors. I wasn't on the board in 2004. But if it had been appealed, I would have been on the board in 2005. And I would have not allowed this type of use because it's in a severe fire zone. And it's incumbent on people like us that have land use authority to keep residential uses out of those fire zones. And this is a caretaker. That's what it's called, but it's a residence. Come on, let's be honest. And, but, I don't know whether that would open us for litigation if we upheld this appeal for Mr. Deerfield, who has got entitlements to this project. And it's just difficult for me to understand whether there would be a legal aspect of this if we uphold the appeal. Can you give me a little help on that?
Sure. And this also goes to whether you uphold or deny this. Upholding this appeal means you're denying the minor use permit and the variance. What happens with it then is it goes to code enforcement. It doesn't go back to the planning commission. It doesn't go for an immediate rezon or any kind of rollout. It simply goes to code enforcement. And the outcome would be to basically get rid of what is built there. That would be the outcome. I think Mr. Deerfield, what he was mentioning, what he was describing, sounds a lot like a discussion that was had with staff as to whether he was vested to continue building. The decision was made that he was not vested, which is why we are here today. The question of what liability we might have if you were to uphold the appeal and deny this is something I probably can't predict, but certainly, I think the current owner would assert that he has certain entitlements. The county, of course, would defend whatever decision that the board desires to make here. If you desire to deny the appeal, what you're going to be required to do is make the same findings as both other bodies have made. One, the minor use permit. Are there conditions? Can you make the findings that this is a caretaker residence that is consistent with the TPZ zone on the variance? Are there special circumstances that would merit the grant of a variance from our current, and we do have to go with our current requirements of 1,200 square feet max on the property? I hope that answers.
Yeah, that's fine. That's, I was hesitant to second the motion because that was my concern. I would just ask staff in the future, and I'm sure they will, because we made 1,200 square foot, codified that in 2012, that staff would hold to that. You know, there is probably a little wiggle room, but certainly over 3,000 square feet is more than wiggle room. So anyhow, I appreciate Ms. Jasper's comments, and I appreciate Supervisor Montgomery's concern. But my concern, although I would have just as soon upheld the appeal, but I'm concerned about any litigation following, and the vested rights that perhaps Mr. Deerfield has. Those are my comments.
Supervisor Montgomery, your light's on. Did you have?
Yeah, thank you. Clearly, the direction that the board is going here is not to uphold the appeal. So I'm going to fold my cards on that one. What I would like to propose as a motion then is that, as wrong as I really think this is, we move forward and allow the project to re-up its building permit, re-up its minor use permit, because currently it has no entitlement, is my understanding. That's why we are here. But that we look to this government code that says within five years, there shall be an ongoing and continuous forest management plan, active forestry, active timber production going on on this property. Or five years from now, we come back and say, guess what? You're now resforest. You're at the full taxation level for the entire amount. But, you know, it either needs to be TPZ, active and managed as TPZ, or it needs to be resforest and taxed at that resforest amount. So my motion would be to deny the appeal, allow the project to go forward, going appropriately through the planning and building process here at the county, but that in five years, if the parcel fails to meet the timber stocking standards, this board or council shall immediately rezon the parcel and specify a new zone for the parcel, which is in conformance with the county general plan and whose primary use is other than timberland.
And County Council, I'm sure, has an opinion on that?
Okay, a couple of things. First of all, in terms of the follow-up, I direct the board to, gosh, I'm not sure which page it is in your packet, but it's attached to C. And it's the conditions of approval. And number five requires the project proponent to submit an annual report describing the timber production activities. So there's an annual check-in as to what's going on in the property. Address your first issue, not to discount that at five years, there is that benchmark. On the issue of immediate rezon, we can't do that. We would have to bring it back through code enforcement and then bring it through the process of then basically requesting, if we got that far, a revocation of the use permit and variance. And if we got further than that, we would be going towards nuisance abatement. There are several steps on that process, but because of due process and, and somebody, the zoning, we can't just simply, right now, do or direct an immediate rezon. We would have to go through the code enforcement process to get to that point.
And so what you're telling me is that government code 511139CB is not enforceable?
It is enforceable, but we have to go through the procedure to enforce it. We have to do it through noticing and bringing it forward for a public hearing to do that particular rezon. So it absolutely is enforceable, but through the process.
All right. Then I would amend my motion to say that the direction from the board would be that we would move forward with that enforceable state language at that five-year point in time, whatever that due process would entail.
And it, just a point of clarification to Supervisor Montgomery's concern about having it in active forestry and then subsequently properly managed. This is a minor use permit. One of the conditions of the approval of a minor use permit is precisely that. And if it's found that they are not consistent with the conditions of approval of the minor use permit, the county can revoke the minor use permit, and the caretaker's residence would have to be vacated, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I think it's highly unlikely that any future board would say, and by the way, you can't use the home you built.
Well, I want to say that I agree with the concerns that have been expressed by you, Supervisor Montgomery, on this topic. I believe, looking at the property in its present state, looking at what I think the reasonable expectation of any one of us would have, looking at a piece of property that's for sale, that has built a foundation and a well, and makes some calls to the county and says, hey, I'm looking at buying this piece of property. They've got some approvals over here from, you know, a few years back, and they got a well in. Do you think there's going to be any problem with us, you know, moving forward with this? And I have to imagine the county, whoever it was on the phone at the time, probably said, no, I don't see there'd be a problem with that. I just, the reasonable expectation of somebody arriving on site and seeing the condition as it was, leads me to believe that we are putting an undue burden on a property owner who had a reasonable expectation when he bought the property, that he would be able to use it as the county had previously permitted. That's number one. Number two, I do believe that their presence on this property will result in a more fire-safe property for that property, for the neighboring properties. I do believe that having them there means that you will have active management as opposed to what we have all over this county with our absentee landlords who own big pieces of property. And we got it in Granite Bay in spades, where people own property. And because of the way our rules are written, if there's, you know, just the vacant parcel, we can do certain things to make them clean it up, but it's a long process and an expensive process for all of us. But having people there typically tends to lend itself to a little better management. So I believe that some of the concerns that I've heard expressed by a couple of my colleagues about the fire danger will actually be reduced by having these people there on site. And then third, the other thing that I've heard that I just can't wrap my brain around is the assertion that something is either untouched by human hands or human footprints or it's urban. The characterization. The characterization of this site being urbanized, even if you grant the total footprint of 5,600 square feet when you include the garage and the covered porch and all the rest, at 5,600 square feet, that is about how big we're talking about, right? And each acre is 43,560 square feet times 66 acres, you're over 2.8 million square feet. And you're going to have two tenths of 1% of coverage on 2.8 million square feet, and you call that urban? By what definition is that urban? So I, the, this assertion that having any human presence means urbanization, I just flat-out reject, and I do believe that human presence will result in better management of this property long-term to the benefit of the property owners and the neighboring property owners. So those are my thoughts. Supervisor Wegant?
I'm collecting my thoughts. Thank you. So Jennifer, I think, from what I've just heard, we're all pretty close to being on the same page, depending on the details of your motion. I can't frankly remember exactly the conditions.
I can restate it if you'd like.
Well, let me, if, for example, your motion was to say that this be brought back five years hence with a detailed review by the board as to the implementation of the timber harvest plan, I'm very comfortable with that because I think it strikes at what Kirk was addressing and strikes my concern. And I think, I mean, it's provocative because it's different from where I live and the kind of lives that I have and style in that it's forestry, but aside from that, it's really pretty much the same. So, and the question is, are humans going to be better caretakers of the open space in 40, 60, 80-acre parcels or dwelling areas as compared to thousands of acres of TPZ zoning that's harvested by Sierra Pacific Industries? And I think, you know, we don't know the answer to that. Obviously, if it's an operation like SPI, they're going to manage their property as they historically have for its profit value, but in a responsible way, in my view. But we have, this is in a mixed-use area for TPZ. And I think a dwelling unit out there, the size question is a different issue, but it offers up an opportunity for the implementation of that harvest plan that I think could be a win-win. For me, if I look at the different exhibits that we have, there's opportunity for reforestation on a lot of it, which is very harvestable property. There is a need for forest management, fuel load reduction on a significant portion of it, it appears. And like with a lot of the parcels in and around where I live personally, people aren't going to make a living doing that, but the income can supplement the cost of living out there. And so I'm happy with a good hearty look in five years. I think it becomes really difficult and challenging, though, to how to implement something more than that as it relates to the initiation of a process presuming something one way or the other is going to happen. So I'm happy to second a motion that's something along those lines, and I think we would have some great opportunities to actually do some work and learn some stuff. And I'll leave my comments at that.
And County Council's scribbling furiously here, so I just want to see.
She is. I have a suggestion for the board's consideration. One would be, as you know, this is a hearing de novo, is to add another condition to the conditions of approval that would state something like this, and I wasn't finished writing, so bear with me. Upon the fifth anniversary of signing the agreement to meet stocking standards, an assessment of compliance with the stocking standard shall be made by the planning director. If compliance is not found, the matter shall be noticed and scheduled before the board for consideration of an immediate rezone.
I would be comfortable with that.
That's very creative.
And I think EJ just put it as condition 16?
Yep, that's accepted.
Okay. So then what I'm hearing is a motion, if I may, a motion to deny the appeal, to find that the minor use permit and variance are categorically exempt, all the rest as noted in our agenda packet, uphold the planning commission's decision, however, to add an additional condition of approval as iterated by County Council.
Yeah, and thank you. I think that's a good characterization. And again, you know, just to reiterate, I'm very concerned about not adhering to the standards that we established. I recognize that this board is not willing to go there today, so I'm hopeful that this is something that we can get to, that will still make sure that this parcel remains in TPZ and is appropriately managed for TPZ. I don't think anyone in this room wants to see TPZ go away in Placer County, even on a 66-acre parcel. And so with that, I just, I want it to be very clear that should something come forward to us in the future that didn't have a building permit and didn't build a foundation under appropriate circumstances in the past, it doesn't get this same sort of treatment. This is not a precedent-setting decision that our board is making today.
Anything else that you wanted to add? No, I'm just asking because your light was still on. All right. Well, we do have a motion by Montgomery and a second by Wegant. So seeing no other comments by board members, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? All right. Thank you. We will go ahead and move to our next staff item. Item number six, a procurement item regarding office supplies. Evidence, we were out of post-its. $800,000 worth of post-its, is that what you're here for? Is that what?
Plus a few other things, sir.
Okay.
Good morning, Chairman Yor, Supervisors. My name is Brett Wood. I'm your Purchasing Manager. I am here today to request your approval of a renewal of our county-wide agreement with Office Depot for office supplies. This is for the period of January 1 of this year through December 31st. It's also request, I'm also at this time requesting your approval for two additional renewal periods of one year each and asking for your authorization for change order authority in the amount of $80,000. As a matter of background and history for your board, this item has been, this contract has been presented to your board in 2017 and 18. We have utilized for several years a cooperative approach to the office supplies contract, where we utilize other agencies' competitively bid agreements where they have a significantly higher volume than we do and can achieve a better price. Office supplies are traditionally a very tight market, but we have found that this has been of a benefit to Placer County and has helped save us funding for those services. In addition, with the implementation of the Workday Financial System, we utilize what's called a punch-out catalog, which is a streamlined opportunity to expedite those orders being placed, limiting staff time and resources in placing those orders, which has also been a benefit to the county. For those reasons, we are seeking your board's approval for this renewal and those extensions at this time. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Were members of any questions? I don't see any. Any members of the public have any questions on this item? Our board is being asked to approve a contract, $800,000 for post-its and Supervisor Gore's business cards. So let's pleasure the board. Motion Gore to second Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Let the record reflect Supervisor Holmes temporarily absent. Moving on to our janitorial services agreement.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Again, this is Brett Wood with Purchasing, with Procurement Division. This is a request to increase our existing master services agreement with Pride Industries in the amount of 133,000, resulting in a total contract value of 1.783 for the period ending December 31st. It's also a request to renew that contract for the 2019 year in the amount of $2 million and authorize two additional renewals, again at that $2 million mark with a $100,000 change order authority. So that your board has some background with this, this item was brought to your board in, most recently in 2014, when we consolidated multiple janitorial service contracts with Pride Industries. We are currently maintaining all of the county facility occupied space in the Tahoe area as well as multiple areas within the Auburn area, as well as in other areas within the county. We're currently at about 81% of our existing building maintenance space is being maintained by Pride. The amount, the change order is a result of additions that we made in the year 2018, where we thought we had enough coverage within our existing contract and did not correctly recognize the additional expense until late in December, at which point we executed our 10% increase that was authorized by the board, and then we needed this additional 133,000 to bring us into full balance with that agreement. The $2 million request includes a small factor for additional buildings that may become, that may move over into, onto this agreement, as well as allows for some continued additional expansion of those services as staffing limits change within the building maintenance division. With that, be happy to speak to, be happy to answer any questions that your board may have with respect to this item.
All right. Questions for board members? I don't see any. Any members of the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, we're being asked to approve a contract with Pride Industries for various janitorial services. Motion Holmes and a second Wegant, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Supervisor Montgomery temporarily absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works. Look at this. District One Supervisor's been here 10 minutes, she's already getting new bridges. Boy, you work fast.
Big bridge.
Yeah.
All right. Good morning. Hello, my name is Kellen Printeville. I'm a civil engineer in the Public Works Department, roadway and bridge engineering division. Thank you for your time this morning. I have two items to talk to you about today, both regarding the Willerga Road at Dry Creek Bridge Replacement Project. We've presented several actions to you over the past year for this project, so I'm happy to be here presenting these next two items because that means we're finally ready for construction for the project. The first item is our construction management contract, and the action requested reads as follows. Adopt a resolution awarding request for proposal number 100004 and execute contract number 000987 to Prescience Corporation for project inspection, materials testing, survey, environmental and construction management services for the Willerga Road over Dry Creek Bridge Replacement Project in the amount of $3,794,807.94 upon County Council and Risk Management Concurrents and authorize the Director of Public Works or designee to execute future contract amendments up to $379,480.79 as needed. This project is in the western part of the county, District One, on Willerga Road, and frequently, every couple of years when we have a big storm, we have to close the road, which is both inconvenient and hazardous to the public. So we're proposing to replace the existing substandard bridge with a new bridge that's much higher and longer, and so we won't have these flood-related closures. The size of the new bridge and proposed bicycle and pedestrian paths will also benefit the needs of the growing community in that area. To obtain the construction management firm, DPW worked with Procurement Services Division to develop and request, to develop the Request for Proposals, or RFP. The RFP was distributed to over 1,400 firms. We received six proposals. The proposals were evaluated by a panel of county staff, including myself, and the top three firms were interviewed. From the interviews and proposal evaluations, Prescience Corporation was determined to be the most qualified firm, and there were no protests. One special note for this contract is that because this is a larger and more visible regional project, the construction management contract includes a public outreach component, and we're still developing the details of that, but we plan to have, or the scope of their contract includes a project-specific website and a place where constituents can sign up for a newsletter or project notifications. And we've already met with the county's Public Information Office, but we plan to work with them further to develop content for them to distribute via social media. Funding for the project, I won't get too much into it because we've discussed this in the past. The project funding was described in detail in the finance plan that was approved by your board on July 10, 2018. So rather than go into details, I'll just share that the finance plan described the project cash flow details and that the project is primarily funded with federal highway bridge program funds, with matching funds coming from local fee programs. Construction will also include some utility relocation work, which will be paid for by the utility owners themselves. And at this point, the project is expected to be well within budget. So I'm happy to open it up to questions.
Supervisor Holmes?
Well, I was prepared to make a motion. Maybe we should open it up to the...
Oh, okay. All right. Supervisor Gore?
Just one quick question. When do you anticipate construction beginning and the project being finished?
We anticipate beginning in spring, hopefully February. You know, if you pass this today, we'll get the contracts routed and get going in February. And it should go into 2021. So about two and a half years.
Okay. Not seeing any of the questions from board members. Any members of the public here to address this item?
Good morning. Mike Karabedian, Placer Group, Sierra Club. I'm not familiar with the previous action on this, which may go into detail and answer my question. I think you mentioned that there were fee contributions to some extent. So my question is, what is the expected fee recovery, I assume, from development and developers? Is that the fee recovery? So I'd like to get some idea of the picture of how much will come from fees from development.
Thank you.
Either now or later, get some idea.
I'll ask her to address that once we have all the questions asked. Any other members of the public? All right. Mr. Grimm, did you want to take a shot at this one, or are we going to throw Kellen back in front of that bus, too?
Yeah. Ken Grimm with Department of Public Works. Just a little update. So originally, we have a fee program with the city of Roseville, a joint fee program. The Willerga Road Bridge Replacement, as well as the widening of Baseline Road, is contained within that program. So the, much of the local match is being paid for by the developer fees. The vast majority, 20-plus million dollars of this project, is being paid by the federal government in the form of the local bridge program.
And those development fees that are being assessed, is both Roseville and incorporated Placer County for?
We jointly do it together because we both realize both of our developments have an impact on the Willerga Road.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grimm. All right. Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, I just wanted to make a motion to approve this in memory of Supervisor Santucci, who, this was a very important project for the whole eight years that he was on the board. I remember going to DC the last, this last year in office and lobbying for this to be in the bridge replacement program. So it's my great honor to make this motion in honor of Supervisor Santucci.
All right. Motion Holmes, second Gore. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. And having approved the overseers, let's approve the workers. What do we say?
So the second item is regarding the actual construction contract. The action requested is adopt a resolution awarding construction contract number 000988 to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, MCM Construction, Inc., out of North Highlands, California, for the construction of the Willerga Road over Dry Creek Bridge Replacement Project in the amount of $23,678,610 and execute the contract with County Council and Risk Management Concurrents and authorize the Director of Public Works or designee to execute contract change orders up to $1,421,430 as needed. Your board approved the project plans and specifications... Your board approved the project plans and specifications, and authorized solicitation of bids on July 10th, 2018. Public Works worked, again with the Procurement Services Division, to solicit bids publicly. Over 1,400 firms were contacted, and we received seven bids. The bids were evaluated, and MCM Construction was determined to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. We did receive one protest from Flatiron West, who was the number-two low bidder, but that protest was resolved and accepted by all parties. And as I mentioned before, the project is well within budget, and we're excited to move forward.
Okay, questions by board members? Seeing none, questions from the public? Pleasure to the board.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve...
All right, we have a motion, Gore, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move to Choo Choo Bridge. Choo Choo, yes, the little choo-choo goes across that bridge, right? Thomas, Thomas the Tank Engine travels on this, yeah. Am I off track?
Two bridges on that one. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Alice Atherton, I'm Associate Civil Engineer in the Department of Public Works in the Road and Bridge Design Group. I'm here to speak with you about two items as well, and two projects, three bridges, not as big as Kellen's, but they're good projects. So the first item, I, oh, and I want to mention, both of them are for the construction management contracts for these projects. So my first item is adopt a resolution awarding request for proposal number 10726, and execute contract number 000978 to HDR Construction Control Corporation for construction management services for the bridge rehabilitation project on Bowman Road at Union Pacific Railroad in an amount of $916,815, and to authorize the Director of Public Works or designee to execute future contract amendments up to $91,681 as needed. So a little project background, this project will rehabilitate two existing bridges on Bowman Road that cross over the Union Pacific Railroad tracks, right here in Auburn. The proposed project consists of widening the existing bridges and roadway approaches to current standards, including bike lanes and sidewalks, as well as structural rehabilitation of the piers, foundations, girders, and decks. We anticipate construction will begin in the spring, and during that time Bowman Road will be closed from approximately the beginning of April to the end of October. Let's see, for this item, we worked with Procurement Services Division to develop a request for proposals for construction management services. The RFP was distributed to nearly 400 firms, and we received two proposals. The proposals were evaluated by a panel of county staff, and both firms were interviewed. From the interview and the proposal evaluation, HDR was determined to be the most qualified firms, and we received no protests. So this is a more visible project, and the public will see much of it with the businesses directly adjacent to the project site. So we do have a public outreach component within this contract for the consultant. The scope of the work includes, we're thinking a project-specific website, a place where constituents can sign up for like a newsletter or some kind of notification process, and then also we'll develop content from, for our Public Information Office to distribute via social media, and it's kind of a work in progress to see what, what the needs of the businesses are, they may, we may develop flyers that they can hand out to their own, people who come into their store, customers, everyone's looking at me. So...
Don't look at Alice.
No one, okay. Because Bowman Road will be closed, we have some unique challenges for the businesses and schools, and the bikes and pedestrians. If you approve this contract, we will begin working diligently with our public outreach staff over the next two months to keep all of these stakeholders informed, so they know what to expect, and ask questions, and then we can, they can give us feedback, and then we can adjust our plan as needed. So right now, we do anticipate coming back for another presentation for the construction contract, either the January 29th or the February 5th meeting, so I'm happy to take any questions from the board this time.
Great, board members have any questions? I don't see any, any members of the public want to address the board on this item? All right, pleasure to the board. Motion Montgomery, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none. All right, well, we got District One and Five out of the way, let's jump down to Two.
Okay. I'll talk like that. Okay, so this action is to adopt, adopt a resolution awarding request for proposal number 100016, and execute contract number 000996 to Drake Haglen and Associates Incorporated for construction management services of the Dowd Road at Markham Ravine Bridge Replacement Project in an amount of $525,872, upon County Council and Risk Management concurrence, and to authorize the Director of Public Works or designee to execute full, future contract amendments up to $52,587 as needed. So this is an older narrow bridge on Dowd Road that crosses over Markham Ravine. The existing bridge has some significant structural issues and needs to be replaced. The proposed project will construct a new, longer concrete bridge on a higher alignment that will be better for conveying flood flows. We are anticipating construction to begin in the spring, and during that time Dowd Road will be closed, and approximately, this will be from approximately the beginning of May to the end of October. On this item, we worked with Procurement Services Division to develop requests for proposals for construction management services. The RFP was distributed to more than 350 firms, and we received three proposals. The proposals were evaluated by a panel of staff, county staff members, as well as an outside member from a different agency, and two, two firms were interviewed in this process. From the interview and the proposal evaluation, DHA was determined to be the most qualified firm, and we received no protests. The project is entirely funded from the Federal Highway Bridge Program, I want to mention that, and, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions by board members? Questions to the public? And what's the pleasure of the board? Motion Holmes, second Wigan, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, item E, Auburn Creekside Center Development, we're being asked to consider some traffic fee credit reimbursement agreement stuff.
Great, good morning Chairman and Board Members, my name's Ken Grimm with the Department of Public Works, and today we're asking you to authorize the Director of Public Works to sign a traffic fee credit and reimbursement agreement with Auburn Creekside Center Development associated with the development they're proposing off, in North Auburn, off Highway 49. The Auburn Creekside Development was approved by the Planning Commission in August of 2016. It proposes a new shopping center along Highway 49, just north of the existing Target Store. The conditions of approval for that project require various street improvements on Highway 49, from Bell Road to Rock Creek Road, improvements on Rock Creek Road, adjacent to their parcel, as well as the education, the extension of Education Street from Highway 49 over to Quartz Drive. There's also on Quartz Drive, adjacent to their property, there are some grading improvements that are required to facilitate the future widening of that road. The cost of all those public improvements are estimated to be about $6.9 million. A lot of those improvements are included in our, the capital improvement program of our traffic impact fee program. In fact, the eligible amount of improvements for that are estimated at about $4.1 million. And that's associated with, because these are considered, or at least some of those improvements are considered, to accommodate the regional growth that's occurring in North Auburn. The project's traffic impact fee obligation is only $700,000. So they're putting in much more than their obligation, and so they are entitled to some form of reimbursement. So if you subtract that 700,000, their obligation, from the 4.1 million, we get to a number of 3.4 million, that they are entitled in reimbursement going into the future. The Auburn Bowman Fee District today has a fund balance of only 1.2 million, so we do not have enough money to reimburse them at this time. So a reimbursement agreement is necessary to kind of spell out the terms of the reimbursement, how we will do that over time. The major points of that agreement, first and foremost, we have a maximum allowable reimbursement of 4.1 million. Second, repayment of what we do, what we will owe them, will only come from revenues associated with the Auburn Bowman Traffic Impact Fee District. So there are no other funds that are being promised and cumbered to pay back that, that reimbursement, it's only what we collect through that fund. It does recognize that there are some pluses and credits that we both receive, it recognizes that they have a fee obligation, what that fee obligation is, and it comes off of the reimbursement. It also recognizes there are some improvements, particularly along Quartz Drive, that they, that they have an obligation to do, that we are not asking them to bill today, so it lowers the amount, and that's of about $559,000, lowers the amount that we will reimburse them going into the future. And then it also recognizes that we're going to be a partner with them in a community development block grant fund, grant application. They are targeting upwards of 4.8 million that they might receive. We've said that we want to be able to participate, being a partner, that that, that there is a sliding scale, that's shown in the agreement, and so it is sliding, it's not a fixed amount, but at the 4.8 million, we would get, the county would get a, a credit of $960,000 if they get 4.8 million. Again, sliding scale depending on how much they actually receive. In addition to that, it talks about, once they complete the improvements, we will give them an initial payment of $800,000 towards the reimbursement we owe them. From then on out, quarterly, they will be entitled to 85% of the revenues in the Auburn Bowman Traffic Impact Fee Program, so as revenues come into that district, they will be entitled to 85% of the revenues until they are paid off. Important to note, though, that there is no interest that will accrue on the money that we owe them. We will only be paying back the principal amount over time when we can, and we make no promises as to when that time will occur. It will likely take upwards of a, of a decade, 10 years, to be able to pay that back at our current rates of accrual. So with that, happy to answer any questions you have, but we're asking you again to authorize the Director of Public Works to sign and execute with County Council review and Risk Management review and concurrence of that agreement.
Okay, I see no questions from board members, any members of the public wish to address this on this? All right, pleasure to the board. That was a motion by Montgomery, a second by Holmes, is that what I heard? Is that Mr. Holmes? Was that your second? Yeah, thank you. All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much. South Placer Wastewater Authority Operations Funding Joint Exercise Powers Agreement, Exercise of Power Agreements.
Good morning Chairman Euler, members of your board, welcome Supervisor Gore. We're here this morning, my name is Kevin Bell, I'm the Environmental Engineering Manager in the Department of Public Works, and I have Robin Mahoney, who's a senior civil engineer with me. We're here this morning to request your board consider approval of the second amended and restated South Placer Wastewater Authority's Authority Operations Funding and Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement. For some background, the South Placer Wastewater Authority was formed by Placer County, City of Roseville, and South Placer Municipal Utility District in 2000, that established the funding for the construction and operation of the sewer, regional sewer facilities that would be used by, by those entities. The entities that are from Placer County that are affected by those agreements are Sewer Maintenance District Two, which is Granite Bay, Sewer Maintenance District Three, which is Loomis, Sunset, and Dry Creek. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robin to talk about the, the agreements a little bit more.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. Upon SPWA formation, each participant developed growth projections that were the basis for determining each participant's share of the capacity and debt liability associated with the regional wastewater facilities. Because the debt service was intended to be paid by connection fees, and connection fees can fluctuate from year to year, a rate stabilization fund, or RSF, was established. The RSF is one account with separate subaccounts for each participant. The RSF was intended to stabilize funding shortfalls during periods when actual growth is less than projected growth. Due to slower growth than anticipated, the county's RSF subaccount became negative, and to address this, a reallocation agreement was executed in 2012 that required the county to pay $5 million upfront and $500,000 annually, until the county's subaccount becomes positive, which is anticipated in 2022. The first amended and restated SPWA agreements in 2012 shifted capacity and debt liability among the partners, and placed a higher share of the UV disinfection debt on the county compared to the county's share of the rest of the treatment plant debt. The county has complied with the terms of the reallocation, reallocation agreement, it is on track with the original schedule, but we have continued to work with our partners to find a better path forward. Staff has worked closely with its SPWA partners to develop a solution to these issues. The proposed second amended and restated agreements rectify these issues by shifting the debt liability of a large portion of the UV construction cost from the county to the other partners, primarily Roseville, to be in line with the debt share for the rest of the regional wastewater facilities. The proposed agreements would change the county's proportionate share from 15.91% to 13.48%, and overpayments made to date would be applied to the county's subaccount. The result of these changes in these proposed second amended and restated agreements is approximately a negative $3 million to a positive $4 million balance of the county's RSF subaccount, and elimination of the requirement to pay the $500,000 annually as a term of the reallocation agreement.
So staff would like to point out that our partners, working with both SPMUD and City of Roseville, and in particular Ken Glotzbach at the City of Roseville, were very helpful in, in working through this, and were truly came at it as a, as a partnership in, in how to make this move forward and to the benefit of all, all the parties involved. So we want to point that out and thank, thank City of, City of Roseville's staff. So in order to proceed, staff recommends that your board approve the second amended, second amended and restated SPWA Operations Funding and JPA agreements, and authorize the chair to execute those agreements.
Okay, so just for clarification, the, the dollars are the cost for each of the members of SpOa is a reflection of, yes, is a reflection of allocation, essentially unit, capacity allocation.
Yeah.
And in 2012, we rejuggled the numbers based on what was actually taking place. We saw that Roseville was growing a little faster, some of the SPMUD area was growing a little faster, Granite Bay-Loomis wasn't growing quite as fast, and we were in a bit of a deficit, and so we reallocated capacity and dollars associated with that capacity. And we're essentially doing the same thing now, again with realization that we continue to see growth in the SPMUD area and Roseville area, and not as much in the unincorporated Loomis and Granite Bay area.
Yeah, that's essentially what's taking place.
So this is the second time that we've seen the growth in our surrounding areas, exceeding the growth in the unincorporated areas, and we're making infrastructure changes. Ken, I'm just saying this in advance of our traffic-related workshop that we have at the Granite Bay MAC, so that we can reinforce this notion that yes, in the Granite Bay area, we are experiencing growth that was less than we had projected based on the existing community plan, while the area around us has continued to grow at a pretty good clip. And so when people are frustrated that they can't get out of their driveways or onto Auburn Folsom, no, it doesn't necessarily mean it's their own neighbors in Granite Bay that are causing that problem. So just, you know, just to understand that this all works together as a system, whether it's roads or dirty water, it all works together as a system, it's a beautiful thing. All right, any other questions by board members? That was my therapy, all right Holmes? I need therapy every now and then, it's not just Wigan. Okay, any other questions or inane comments by my colleagues? No. My colleagues all have relevant comments, not the inane ones like me. No members of the public, so we'll bring this back, what's pleasure to the board?
True approval.
Okay, motion Holmes, second Wigan, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much. Now to have a riveting conversation on a fire impact fee nexus study, my Granite Bay Chief Walder is here to participate.
Good morning Chairman Euler.
Good morning.
Members of the board, Holly Powers, Assistant Director, Office of Emergency Services. I'm here to introduce Fire Chief Eric Walder to talk about the Nexus Fee Study for South Placer Fire.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to the board for allowing South Placer to come here today, and for the county exec putting this item on the agenda for, for the board to consider, also all your personnel that, that made that possible as well. It's been a long road for South Placer Fire District to, to get this item to the Placer County Board of Supervisors. This all stems from our... This all stems from our consolidation in 2017 with the Loomis Fire District, the first successful consolidation in over 20 years in Placer County. And this was called out in the LAFCO resolution to, that we would keep separate mitigation impact fees until the time we had one consolidated nexus study. So the district reached out to SCI and hired our consultant Blair Oz, who will sort of give you the nuts and bolts of the report, but I was just, wanted to let the board know that this has been approved by the district's Board of Supervisors, the Town of Loomis, District Board of Directors, and the Town of Loomis, and this is the last step to completing the process to have one single mitigation fee across the South Placer Fire District, which some may not know consists of Granite Bay, the Town of Loomis, unincorporated Loomis, Southeast Newcastle, and just a little portion of Penrin. So with that, I'll bring up Blair, who is our consultant.
Thank you, Chief Walder, and good morning, I believe. I believe it's morning.
Still, yes.
Supervisors, again, my name is Blair Oz, I'm with SCI Consulting Group, and pleased to be here this morning to present the fire impact fee nexus study and fee programs for the South Placer Fire Protection District. Again, so as Chief Walder indicated, with the consolidation of both districts, we launched into an effort to consolidate both fee programs. The, we prepared a fire impact fee nexus study which established the legal and policy basis for imposing the new consolidated fee. The results of that study, one indicated that the, in terms of the change in the fees, if we look primarily at single-family housing, the fee for the South Placer Fire partition area of the district, those fees actually fell by about 10%, which was, which was sort of expected because with the consolidation, there were some efficiencies, the district was able to surplus some apparatus and vehicles and equipment. With the Loomis area of the, of the district, those fees are actually increasing rather significantly, only because the fee was outdated, it was last established 15 years ago. So just over that time period, those fees escalated a little bit. One noticeable change to the, those two fee programs was that those fee programs had just one fee for all types of development. And because for this, for this new fee program, we made a change going from one fee to a fee schedule, and the purpose of that is because one of the demand factors is, is residents and employees that the district is protecting, and because land uses have varying employment densities and household sizes, the law really requires that you have a more, a more fee schedule rather than just one fee. So we did, we did make that, that one change. And lastly, just one thing to note, the fee is projected to generate about $3.5 million. The district has about a million dollars in reserves. Just to put that in context, the district's capital improvement plan for the next 20 years is about $22 million. So it's, it's funding a small share of that. Chief Walder and I were actually quite pleased, because when we looked at the district's finances and how their practices for how they fund capital improvements from the general fund, we projected that out along with these balances, that actually both these funding sources will accomplish the, the district's capital improvement plan over the next 20 years. We're very, well, obviously that'll need to be monitored over time, but we're, we're really pleased that the combination of both of those will be, will help fund the district's capital improvement plans, so. So again, and just lastly, to reiterate that, the fee program has been approved by the district board. The nexus study was approved, the proposed fees, and they formally request that you adopted on their behalf, and at the same time, that resolution indemnified the county for any legal challenges to the, to the fee as well. So with that, can I take any questions?
Board members have any questions? I don't see any questions from board members, and I don't see any members of the audience to ask any questions, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. We're being asked to adopt the resolution approving the South Placer Fire Protection District Impact Fee Nexus Study. We have a motion Holmes and a second Wygant. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here, Chief.
No charge for the entertainment, Chief.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Two shows daily, tip your waders.
All right, take care.
Okay. We're being asked to approve minutes of the December 18th Board of Supervisors meeting. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
And a motion Montgomery, second to Holmes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain? Do you want to abstain, or are you comfortable?
Yes.
I think it would make, yeah.
I abstain.
All right. So we have one abstention Supervisor Gore. And moving into a conversation regarding 2019 Board and Commission assignments, as my colleagues know, every year we take a look at assignments that we've had historically. Obviously, with the change in lineup here, the, we have an opportunity to change the batting order on some of these committees and commissions, and so I just want to kind of open it up to discussion, get folks' thoughts on their current assignments and where they might like to go. I will kick it off by saying, in regard to the Criminal Justice Policy Committee, I've had extensive conversations with our CEO, who thinks that our board needs to be perhaps a little even more vigorously represented by maybe expanding that to two board members that would serve on the Criminal Justice Policy Committee. I am certainly excited by the opportunity, should my colleagues give it to me, to be one of those two that serves on that committee for the next year.
I'd like to be on that.
Yeah, I would too.
Oh. Well, we have three on a, on a two-person committee.
Me too.
You two? Okay, all right. You know, we could just, we could just start kicking off the law enforcement, folks.
I'm happy to not be on.
Make it, make it on.
Chair Yuler.
Yes.
I'd be glad to be an alternate, but.
Okay.
Since I'm here most of the time.
So you do tend to frequent the place, yes. So we will, then that's a very nice concession. Thank you Supervisor Holmes. So without objection, then we will be appointing myself, Supervisor Montgomery, and Supervisor Holmes will be the alternate for the Criminal Justice Policy Committee. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I would like to add to that, though. I think we are really in a rich position with regards to that committee and the work that you two folks do due to really embrace realignment or more intelligent long-term management or palpitations as it relates to the rest of the whole public protection pipeline. So don't hesitate to bring stuff back to us, and I would look forward to some robust conversations here, and I think we can, at the board level, take a leadership position there with the courts, who are not a county department, and really do some exciting things that I'm looking forward to seeing that work come forward.
Thank you. And along those lines, I would encourage any of our colleagues who have any thoughts to please reach out to myself and Supervisor Montgomery and share those thoughts.
These are quarterly meetings at this point, right?
I'm sorry?
Quarterly meetings at this point?
I do believe it is a quarterly committee meeting at this point. We might step that up a little bit.
Yeah. And I'd like to say thank you for your graciousness Supervisor Holmes. I appreciate that Supervisor, or excuse me, Chairman Yuler, I'm happy to keep the balance of my committee and commission appointments, with one exception, I would like to go from the alternate on the California Tahoe Conservancy Board to the appointee. In the past, electeds were not allowed to be the appointee to that board. That changed last summer with some legislative action at the state level, and I think it appropriate since every other appointee on that board is the elected that I get moved into that position, but we leave Larry Savison as the alternate.
As the alternate, okay. Any concerns by any colleagues on us making that change? Okay. Do you want to give us, you know, just your CV, why you think you're qualified?
No reason, really.
I mean, since we are interviewing you for that position. All right. Again, let's start with anything that those of us who have already been serving on, might want to jettison, anything stick the new person with?
I'm sorry, to CSAC? Yeah, you're, light yourself up there so we can hear you there.
Got to hear your handsome voice. There you go.
That's the only handsome thing about.
The face of the foothills, ladies and gentlemen.
So as I was saying, CSAC, that's California State Association Counties. I'd like to appoint Supervisor Gore, and I'd be the alternate for them.
Okay. Supervisor Gore, are there any of those committees, commissions previously occupied by the former District One Supervisor that you have any concerns about?
No, there are not.
Is there anything else that you're interested in participating in that is not currently represented by the former District One Supervisor, obviously Supervisor Holmes having said that you would take over as primary on, was it SECOG?
CSAC.
CSAC, okay.
Let's see. So I was interested in LAFCO, but it sounds like Supervisor Wygant and Holmes would like to continue doing that, so I'm happy to.
I would, again, I would be glad to be the alternate, since I'm here all the time anyhow. So if you want to be on that, I have no problem with that. I'm in the building most of the time, so.
He doesn't have a home to go to. It's very sad.
So Supervisor Holmes, you're looking at having Supervisor Gore be on LAFCO with Supervisor Wygant and you serving as alternate?
Yeah.
And then the other thing we talked a little bit about was, well, actually, SECOG, which Supervisor Ram was on previously. I don't know where we landed as far as the additional committee work. I know that you were the committee person for transportation for SECOG. And I think the interest with James Corliss was to just have one supervisor, correct?
Yeah, that's, so. So I would be glad to be the alternate, and also the Transportation Subcommittee. There's other, there's Land Use Committee.
Right.
Those kinds of things. So we could work that out, whichever you feel comfortable with as we move forward. Since I'm on PCTPA, it just makes sense for me to be on.
And chairman of PCTPA.
Oh, that's right. I'm the chair.
Yes, the chair of PCTPA, yes. Because I nominated you.
That's right. Thank you.
I wouldn't accept the job. So, so, yeah.
Supervisor Gore would be on this.
Right. So that would put in all, in all things SECOG, it would put Supervisor Gore as our appointee, and then where we have alternates, it would be Supervisor Holmes.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any thoughts by board members on that? Any issues on any of that? Okay. Then just kind of going back and recapping, the ones that I did hear is we have Supervisor Montgomery and myself on criminal justice with Supervisor Holmes serving as an alternate. We have a swap of the alternate and the primary on the Tahoe Conservancy with Supervisor Montgomery stepping into the primary role. We have Supervisor Gore serving as the primary on all SECOG, and then we have Supervisor Gore on LAFCO with Supervisor Holmes as the alternate. Does that capture all of them?
CSAC.
Oh, CSAC, I'm sorry, yes. And CSAC was Supervisor Gore as well?
Yeah.
Supervisor Gore's going to be a busy lady.
Yeah.
All right. Do we, any discussion, any members that landed, any thoughts on that? You okay with all of this? All right, good. Well, it's the only member of the public here.
What just happened?
Exactly.
More work for me means more work for him.
And why are they calling me out? Just leave me alone. All right. May I have a motion on our committee and commission appointments?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion Holmes, second Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And do, 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 we have, we can just forget that last item, right? We don't need to. That wasn't anything that was important to the board, was it? All right, we do have one final item. We are being asked to approve a step increase for our county executive officer, county council. Would you like to speak to this item prior to the board taking action?
Yes. Mr. Chair, members of the board pursuant to Government Code 54953C3, we are hereby reporting out the 5% increase for Todd Leopold pursuant to the description in the action requested and request that you approve this item.
Okay. And just for the benefit of all those assembled, this does come after our board did conduct an employee review, had good conversation amongst ourselves and a board, and our board as a board, and with our current CEO, and felt it appropriate to move forward with this action.
Correct.
So with that, do we have a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion Montgomery and a second Wygant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Okay. That concludes all agendized items before the Board of Supervisors for January 8th. Our next regular scheduled board meeting is up in Tahoe on January 28th and 29th, and I know some of you are going to run up to Colfax, so we are adjourned.